All right, the meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. We will have an invocation by Chief, by Chief Wolverton. And Councilman Bootcher will lead us with the pledge.
Father, we come to you now with all our hearts, asking that you would be with us as we go through this meeting. We thank you for your grace and mercy in being our Lord and Savior. Father, we pray for this council, for our city administration. We pray that you give them God's wisdom from above to make the decisions that are best for our city and our citizens. Be with us now as we go into this meeting. May everything that we say and do through your arms be, and we ask for forgiveness of our sins. And we pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilman Brown, please.
Present.
Councilwoman Coler.
Present.
Councilman Delkerson.
Present.
Councilman Bootcher.
Present.
Councilman Flory.
Present.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Here.
The motion to approve the minutes of the past meetings.
Second.
And amendment to the council meeting. It's been moved by Councilman Bootcher and seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. All right. Do any councilmen have any awards or recognitions, distinguished guests they'd like to recognize at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Have Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we have with us today several distinguished guests. Commissioner Lewis Johnson, Commissioner District 12 is here, and as well as Commissioner Chavez is here, so good to see you guys. I wanted Commissioner Johnson to come forward for a second. Good to see you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, you have the area that you represent, the mayor of that town is here, is that right?
That is correct, sir.
Will you introduce him to us?
Of course, we'd all like to give greetings to our Honorable Mayor, Mayor Perkins, our Chairman of the Council, and council members. Thank you for allowing me to come before you on today. We so often talk about our neighbors to the east, and of course, they do a good job, and we're very proud of them, being Bojor, but I'm very partial to our neighbors to the west. Our immediate neighbors is the city of Greenwood. I have the honor of representing the city of Greenwood, and they're working hard on lots of initiatives and being a partner to our city in Shreveport. And today here with us, we have the mayor of Greenwood, Mayor Frank, he's here if you would stand, sir. And the clerk of the city of Greenwood, Ms. Veronica, if you would stand. And a city attorney for the city of Greenwood, Attorney Grubbs. And there's a small initiative that's coming before us on today, and so they're here for this initiative to show their support, and of course, I'm here to support them, and as always, it's my honor to address the council. Thank you so for recognizing us today, and thanks for giving this opportunity to come forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, before I ask Mayor Frank to come, Mayor Perkins, were you going to acknowledge him, ask him to say a few words, or could I?
Was I going to acknowledge him or say a few words?
Yes.
I'm just learning that he's here, but yeah, I'd be happy for him to come up and address the council. And thank you for coming to our council meeting. Pretty exciting meeting, so welcome to the fun.
So Mayor, if you pleased, would you like to greet us? We appreciate that.
I am happy to be here again. We have got a lot of things going on in Greenwood, and one of the big things that we're working on, of course, has been our infrastructure, and I know everyone here is well aware of infrastructure. We have built a new water plant. We are redoing all of our lift stations at this time. And incidentally, the real thing in the gist of today is that we had come to the city of Shreveport for some help on a project that we're working on. We have a Ruttner Trucking Company that is building a new location in Greenwood, on Greenwood Road and Rice Road. And at that intersection, we also have a large main that we, the town of Greenwood, purchases water from Shreveport whenever we have issues with our system, we have needs that go, because we provide a lot of water outside of the town limits of Greenwood. And what we needed by recommendation or demand of the fire marshal was to have X number of gallons of water that would be available. And it's something that Greenwood in itself could not economically do. In order for us to do that, we would have to run a new large eight-inch line or greater to the plant or to the trucking company. And we felt like since we already have a line right there across the street, and incidentally, you have your large elevated tank right there on the side of I-20, we thought if Shreveport could provide us that to help the company, that would be a win for both of us. In addition to the additional water sales, it also is going to employ people. All of those folks are not going to live in Greenwood. We feel comfortable, some of them will possibly live in Shreveport, maybe over in Texas, but in the parish. And we think that this is an important step for both of us. What's good for Shreveport is good for Greenwood, and I like to think that what's good for Greenwood is also a good thing for Shreveport. So that's why we are here, and that's why we'd like your support.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I know that this issue would be referred to the mayor and his administration engineering so that we could see how we can assist you in that endeavor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Councilman Green asked me to take him down, but if you want to go ahead and speak, you can.
I said please.
All right. If there's no other, Mr. Crawford, Brian Crawford, good to see you here today.
He's here for a purpose, I think, Mr. Chairman. Even though he's welcome at any time, his legacy still lingers in here.
All right. Any other councilman have any distinguished guests anything at this time? Mayor Perkins.
Yeah, Chairman, Brian missed the city council meeting, so he decided to come back and join in. No, no, Brian is here today on behalf of Willis Knighton, who's presented a check of $5,000 to the Paint Your Heart Out Initiative. This marks the 27th year of Paint Your Heart Out, Paint Your Heart Out Shreveport. So at this time, can I get you, Brian, to stand? And Paint Your Heart Out, the director as well, you can stand up. Could you go to the, I want you all to make some just comments, some brief comments about the presentation. But painting and minor repairs have been made to over 1,600 homes with this program, and this year's event is scheduled for Saturday, May 11th, 2019. And I'd like to have, like I said, Mr. Crawford and the representatives of Paint Your Heart Out, just give some remarks about the program and what it means to our community.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Chairman Bowman and council members, I'm excited to be back on this side of the podium, and I'll be leaving right after my remarks. So, you know, as part of Willis Knighton's commitment each year since 1979, they tied 10% of their bottom line. So they tied 10% of their gross profits back to the community that they serve. And we could think of no better way than to do that than placing $5,000 toward the program that helps so many underprivileged, underserved, and needy in our community to really enhance their quality of life and where they live. You know, in medical terms, it's no secret that having a good quality home environment is conducive for healing, is conducive for well-being. So Willis Knighton Health Systems, President James K. L. Rodd, our Board of Directors, and certainly the 7,800 employees who work at Willis Knighton will be fielding a number of teams to participate in the May event, and we're also happy to contribute $5,000 toward that initiative today.
I am Marsha Nelson, the coordinator of Paint Your Heart Out Shreveport, and I'm always excited about the program. This is our 27th year, and I've had the opportunity to be there from the very beginning. We will paint close to 70 houses this year, and that's far above our goal of 50, and so we want to continue to make it bigger and better each year. My chairperson, Paul Pratt, and Davori's co-chair, he could not be here today, neither one of them could be here, but I can tell you the enthusiasm from both of them is overwhelming, and they work very hard to help us make this successful. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Irving, Bureau Chief of Housing and Business Development for the Department of Community Development. And I would just like to personally thank Willis Knighton on behalf of Mrs. Bunny Moore and the staff of Community Development. And I guess we'd like to thank all of our partners for Community, for Paint Your Heart Out, because it's a great initiative, it's a way of giving back to the community, it's also a way of impacting neighborhoods where there's been no previous investment or investments in the neighborhoods for a long time. So it goes a long ways when you put a little lipstick on some houses, it makes the neighborhood look good. So we just want to say we thank you very much.
Right now, I'll take and take and take it to you. Yes, sir. Mayor, step down here. Don't worry about it. There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you one second? Yes, go ahead, Councilman. Mr. Crawford is here, and Mr. Crawford worked with Ms. Fields Jones for at least four years, a little longer. And while he's here, Mr. Crawford, would you mind making some expressions, a seat of confirmation? Do you have any, anything you would like to add to what the council already know?
I'd be glad to. Thank you very much. Councilman Bradford, again, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take just a few minutes of personal privilege to address the council on an item that's on the initiative and the agenda today for the confirmation of Ms. Sharika Jones Field for CAO. Although it appears to be a foregone conclusion, as I believe I'm speaking to the choir, I want to publicly lend my voice of support to Ms. Fields Jones' confirmation in this critical role. In my previous experience as CAO, I was privileged to have Ms. Fields Jones as my assistant CAO, and came to rely on her keen, objective business sense and fiscal experience, as well as customer-focused working relationship with department directors to ensure the day-to-day operations got done. She has an unflappable personal style of ethical integrity and honesty, and has always maintained an unwavering and personal commitment to this community's success. She knows the challenges, she loves the people of Shreveport, and under that meek exterior can be a tenacious and tough-minded individual when necessary to make things move forward in this organization. In this confirmation today, I know you spoke about it at the last council meeting, but you will all make history in confirming Ms. Fields Jones to become the first African-American woman to hold the office of Shreveport CAO. This is certainly long overdue and another step in the right direction in the history of this city, and for all of our children to understand that regardless of race, gender, sex, religion, or national origin, anything and everything is possible. I wish her the absolute best and implore you to confirm her by unanimous consent today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Crawford, I know he had worked with her, and he said he was going to be leaving, so I didn't want him to leave without having that opportunity. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. All right, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Commissioner, Mount Commissioner Mario Chavez to come up. Mario, would you lead us, what's going to happen Saturday in our district?
Absolutely, Councilman, I appreciate that. I'll take this selfless minute to promote Southern Hills as usual. We're doing a trash pickup, and I'd welcome all you guys, chairman, mayor, my favorite councilman, no offense to the rest of you guys, but if you guys would like to come out on Saturday morning, we've really pulled together the community. We have Job Corps coming out, Pathways for Education, Southwood Band, the Boys to Men Charity Group. We also have Rhino Coffee is donating the coffee to fuel the endeavor, and Southern Made Donuts is providing all the sugar to get the kids up and going. And we're going to be out there at 8:00 AM across the street from Kroger. We were going to meet at Kroger, but we have so many people that wanted to come out and just call and said, hey, listen, is there an age limit? They want to bring their four-year-old kid just to show them community involvement. I said, no, absolutely not. Bring them out, even if it's for 20, 30 minutes, get them involved, they're going to come out and help us clean up the city. We're going to meet across the street at the Shane's, the old Kmart parking lot, because we had so many people, literally, we had 150 people scheduled to show up about two, two and a half weeks ago, but it was just too cold, and we called it off, it was rainy for the safety of the citizens. We're going to redo it this Saturday, 8:00 AM at Shane's parking lot. I'd love to see all you guys there. So thanks for bringing me up, James.
Thank you, and just wanted to say thank you for mentioning the age limit, because I had, and was going to invite one of our staunch supporters, John Settle, to come and be a part of that.
He heard about the donuts, and he said he'd come.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner, you mentioned your favorite councilman, but you didn't say that your favorite councilwoman.
This is very true.
All right.
Favorite councilwoman, absolutely.
All right.
Commissioner Chavez, I was just about to say you stood me up last time, but yeah, it was pretty cold that morning, so the military in me still wanted to go out there.
When you're five foot tall, you don't really stand up a lot.
That is okay. I know I'm vertically challenged, Commissioner, it's okay. But just to revisit, Brian, thank you so much for coming out and wearing the hat for Willis Knighton, and your, those public-private partnerships and those investments in our community go a very long way. Everybody knows the city is on a limited budget, our nonprofit is on limited budget, so it's always incredible when they invest and we join our resources together to do good in the community, and Paint Your Heart Out is a great example of this, so thank you for wearing that hat. And secondly, thank you for, you know, just reinforcing what I've seen since I stepped into the mayor's office with my hopefully soon-to-be CAO. She's shown all those traits from day one, and it means a lot to me that you would come up here with your own time and really stand up for us, so thank you for that. To the next point, Chief Ben Raymond and members of the Shreveport Police Department are out in the audience. Their community-oriented policing bureau are gearing up for a pair of grassroots walks planned for the Sunset Acres and Southern Hills neighborhoods. The first walk is set for today at 4:30 PM in the 6,600 block of Quillan Road at the old MJ Moore Middle School. A second walk is set for March 14th in the 9,800 block of Southwood Drive in Shreveport Southern Hills subdivision at the Southern Hills Church of Christ. In addition to the walks, a party with a purpose is scheduled for March 19th and March 21st. The March 19th event will be held at 8910 Jewella Avenue at Sheriff's Safety Town. The second party with a purpose will be held on March 21st at MJ Moore Middle School. Both events will begin at 5:00 PM and end at 7:00 PM. Chief, do you want to add anything about those events?
No, sir.
Okay. Council members, did y'all, that was a lot of dates and events. You want me to repeat anything? Some of them, Councilman Flurry, some of this stuff is going to be in your district and some others as well. Councilman Green. I'll speak to Chief after they finish. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to say that I appreciate that, and I'd be glad when y'all move over to District G. Just let me know if you get over that way. We're going to get there. We can knock out a few things at a time, but we'll get there. I'd also like to recognize some of our exceptional first responders today. That's who's flanking Chief Raymond right now. But is firefighter Michael Covert here as well? Chief, get you two up as well. Chief Wolverton, thanks for being here and supporting your fireman. Just to quickly talk about these gentlemen standing in front of you and what they've done in our community, firefighter Michael Covert Jr. has been named a state and regional winner for the 40 and 8 Hero Award, Hero of the Year Award. This is a tremendous honor, and I'd like to have Chief Wolverton, oh, well, you're here, sorry, it's in my comments. I'd like to have you just speak on behalf of what that means for this accomplishment for him, and just kind of let the audience know the magnitude of it.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Council members, firefighter Michael Covert Jr. responded to a fire here back in last year around September, October timeframe on Anna Street. As they responded to that fire, he was first in engine company. Him and his officer went in on a search. One took a left-hand pattern, one took a right-hand pattern. It just so happens that Covert rescued, recovered a victim inside, brought her out. She was successfully resuscitated and is alive today. We have a saying on the fire department, every day's a training day. And firefighter Covert's only been on the job about, about four years this summer, I think, coming up. He's committed to his training, and when the time came for him to react and perform, his training did not fail him. And one of the main things I'd like to point out is his courage and his willingness to lay down his life for his friend. Bible says that no greater love hath any man than to lay down one's life for a friend, and that's what he did, someone he didn't even know, and he's well-deserved a recognition today. He's actually a chip off the old block, to be honest with you. His daddy is a captain on the Shreveport Fire Department, and back in 2007, when Chief Crawford was, 2008, when Chief Crawford was fire chief, his father rescued a young child at Autumn Woods Apartments, and also won the 40 and 8 Hero of the Year Award at the regional, state, and national level. And firefighter Covert Jr. will also compete for the National Hero of the Year Award also coming up. He'll be recognized for the state award in June, and then he'll compete, and I believe he'll also be selected as a national award winner also. So I think it's well-deserved recognition today, and he was recognized also at our banquet the other night. I know Councilman Bowman and Councilman Bradford were there as firefighter of the year also for the Shreveport Fire Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, fireman Covert. You literally saved a life. You know, we, first responders and people that go into dangerous occupations for service, you know, we think of worst-case scenario, but you faced it, and you stood up in that moment, and you did well and served the community proud. We, as a community, we also be cheering you on, and hopefully you win this national award and bring some good attention to our city, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, I'd like to, I'd like to point out two police officers that have gone above and beyond as well. The first, so every day as the mayor, I get a police report on any significant incident that happens in our city. And, you know, I go to scenes sometimes, but the first officer, I see him at almost every scene that I've gone to, I see him repeatedly come across these incident reports as being on the scene, responding responsibly, effectively, and so these, the two instances that I'll talk about are two of many that he's done on the front lines of keeping our community safe, and that's Sergeant Kevin Strickland. Sergeant Kevin Strickland is being recognized for his exceptional supervision and response to a couple of recent incidents. One tragedy was the murder of Officer Shetary Payne on January 9th, 2019. Sergeant Strickland was one of the first officers to arrive on the scene to the incident and assisted with taking one of the suspects into custody, seeking medical aid for Officer Payne and preserving the integrity of the scene for what would become an extensive investigation. Additionally, on January 22nd, 2019, a gunshot victim pulled up to Southern Hills Elementary School. While en route to the hospital for treatment, after observing a marked patrol unit on the school grounds, the school resource officer, Captain Corley Lovett, radioed for assistance with the incident. Sergeant Strickland arrived on the scene, and along with the help of Lovett and other officers, was able to assist the victim with obtaining medical treatment, place the school on temporary lockdown to protect the children and staff from unknown threats, and communicate with parents and concerned citizens since it was time for the school to let out for the day. So Officer Strickland, thank you so much for what you do to our community, speaking to that school principal as well. Very grateful for you and all of Shreveport Police Department, so thank you. Officer Brent Giddens is standing beside Sergeant Strickland today. Appeared on a social media video, which was uploaded by some citizens after he took time out of his shift to dance with a group of people in the Cedar Grove neighborhood. Officer Giddens took advantage of an opportunity to engage citizens outside of law enforcement, outside of a law enforcement nature, something we encourage all of our officers to do as often as possible. And what that does is represent exactly what myself and Chief Raymond has been saying about community-oriented policing. You are the prime example of it. We don't want to just put that burden on our community liaison officers or our school resource officers. We want every patrolman to be out there getting to know the community, and that was a prime example of it, so I want to applaud you for that. So. Chief Raymond, do you want to say anything on behalf of these two fine officers?
Just, I appreciate the opportunity to have coworkers join me today. Both officers are a very good representation of what you can expect from Shreveport Police Department. Sergeant Strickland's been a member of the department for 24 years. He currently serves a patrol function, but he also serves investigations. He worked in vice for a number of years while I was in narcotics, and he's also worked violent crimes investigations. Officer Giddens has been on about a year and a half, and he's one of the good ones. He's heading in the right direction, does a very good job out there for us on evening shift patrol. In fact, when he leaves here, he'll be getting back in service and answering the next call. So thank you for the opportunity to introduce them to you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Just real quick, I wanted to say a personal note. Officer Giddens, I don't know you, but I did see the video, and I want to say thank you, that is exactly what we need. We do a lot of, and y'all can go sit down, I can say this from here, y'all don't have to stand in front. We do a lot of talking about, you know, employees and the police department and the fire department, and, but I will say this, I've known Michael Covert's dad for 20-some-odd years. We went to EMT school together, and if he's half the firefighter his daddy is, he's one heck of an asset to the city of Shreveport. So I congratulate him on that, and I remember the night his dad pulled the child out of the apartments down there on Yuri Drive, so good job. As far as Sergeant Strickland, I don't want to get emotional over this, but one of the worst nights of my life, he was there, and he's one hell of a police officer, so thank you for your service.
For a minute, Councilman, I thought you were going to challenge Giddens to a dance off.
They used to call me the dancing bear. No, I'm kidding.
I want to, at this time, bring up the city engineer to give us a brief update on Engineers carry a lot of papers.
Patrick Furlong, the city engineer, there's been a lot of discussion about the consent decree recently, and we thought it was a good time to bring the relatively new city council up to speed with everything to date and touch on the topics of interest. So 2014 is the effective date of the consent decree. It is, it is between the city of Shreveport and the EPA and the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. The consent decree is because of sanitary sewer overflows. That is why we are in this consent decree. It is, they're a violation of the Clean Water Act when sewer leaves our system. It is, they're a violation of the Clean Water Act when sewer leaves our system and enters our streets, our yards, our streams. It violates the Clean Water Act. Generally, what the consent decree requires is for the city to evaluate and assess our sewer system and to make the repairs and replacements and rehabilitation necessary, all for the purpose of eliminating the sanitary sewer overflows. This is the largest capital improvement program that the city has ever undertaken. It's massive, and we'll get into that a little bit more later on. And this, this CIP includes sewer and water improvements. The primary departments involved is engineering and the Department of Water and Sewer. Barbara Featherston came up along with me. We work hand in hand. Barbara was in the engineering department when this all got started, so she is very in tune with the, the history of this program. And obviously now she's in the water and sewer department. So Barbara works with the funding of this program. In engineering, we execute the design and construction. So, so when there's an issue with the contractor out there or a project, it's engineering that manages that work. We are the two primary departments, but the burden of the work is felt throughout the city. Legal has a lot of work through this, purchasing, even spar, you know, it reaches everybody, it's such a massive effort. And because it's such a massive effort, the city is utilizing the services of a program manager. The program manager, they, they work under the engineering department and they oversee the design and construction. They've branded their team, the Clean Water Shreveport Team. The clean water is of significance because, you know, clean bayous and streams without, without sewage in it. Here, here's a summary of the important dates, the schedules. The negotiations began back in 2009. The, the program manager was hired and mobilized to Shreveport back in 2012 to set up the program. Like I mentioned before, the effective date of the consent decree is May 13th, 2014. The design started in 2015 and construction got up and going in 2016. And the, the final date, there's milestones along the way, but the city has until 2026 to complete all the obligations. And the consent decree, it's a pretty thick document if you print it out. I can email it to you if you're interested in reading it. But this kind of outlines the requirements in it, the sanitary sewer assessment, SSA, and there's, there's lots of acronyms that we're all very familiar with, but that's the assessment and evaluation of our sewer system. If you see, before the work, you'll see trucks and they're sending cameras down into our sewer system to video it so we can make a true assessment of the condition. And once we make that assess, the evaluation and engineer makes an assessment and produces a remediation measures plan, the RMP. And that RMP is a document which, it's a broad overview of the work that needs to be done. And that, that plan then goes to the design engineers to produce plans. Another requirement of the consent decree is a hydraulic model. This is a computer model that, that mimics our system so we can measure flows, we can see where the overflows are going to take place, we can mimic rainfall coming into our system and what it does. And that is a requirement that we have to do that. The capacity assessment and the capacity RMP is very similar to what I spoke about earlier, but this is, earlier I spoke about, that was in regards to condition. This is capacity, are the pipes big enough, are the pumps big enough? A couple of other requirements in the collective, collection system, management, operation, and preventative maintenance program. We know it as CMOM. It's, it's a, a plan for our staff to, to properly maintain our facilities in the future. And similar is the ONL, and that's, that's in regards to our treatment plans. Here's a breakdown of where we are. The city has broken down into five phases. Phase one is, is the construction's complete. There's a few punch list items lingering, and there's a little bit of work that a contractor's going to come, have to come back and address, but, but the work is done besides those issues. Phase two is under construction and will be completed very soon. Phase three is, is full speed in the design and construction will get underway this summer. Phase four, we expect the, the RMP to be delivered in the next couple of months. And once we get that delivery, the design engineers will start their design of those projects. And phase five is currently being evaluated. There are stipulated penalties dictated in the consent decree if we don't meet the, the requirements and the deadlines throughout the consent decree. The construction of phase one did go beyond the deadline. The city requested an extension. No stipulated penalties have been assessed for missing that deadline, but we've been in constant communication with, with the DOJ and the EPA to coordinate that. So, phase two is underway, and as you know, the city has had excessive rainfall in the past several months. We've had almost the annual rainfall in three or four months, and it's been cloudy also, and the dirt has not dried and it's called, it's caused delays for phase two. The phase two contractors tell us that they're going to be on track and get it done, but, you know, there are concerns that, that they may carry it past the deadline. So we've drafted a letter to the EPA and the DOJ to explain the situation, explain the excessive rainfall, and request an extension. So we're working on that now. It's just, it's just kind of a contingency in, in case they don't meet the deadline. Here's a little bit about the funding. The consent decree is primarily funded by revenue bonds and low-interest loans from the states. The bond issuances are kept, are set to keep work, to keep work on schedule. The water and sewer rates, an increase was approved by the city council back in 2013. That approval in 2013 approved a schedule of increases, and those increases will continue until 2022. Okay, so there's been some concern about the original estimate and the projected cost now, so I just want to be clear that the consent decree is not over budget. The, the original estimate of 350 million was, was grossly underestimated. It was made off of the best information available at the time, which was very limited. We had not TV'd any pipe at that time. We, we only had the information available to us at that time, and it was actually criticized for being too high at that time. But since we've evaluated the system in phases and performed work of phase one and almost all phase two, we now have a better grasp on the estimated cost. So the new, the new projection reflects the actual cost of the actual condition of the system and what it's going to take. And that's around the $1 billion mark. Like I, like I mentioned, we did not have the assessments and the evaluations when the original estimate was made. We're still doing those. It takes about eight, eight years to, to evaluate and assess the whole city. So, back when the work started, the, the interest rates were very favorable for the revenue bonds. I think Barbara's going to come up and, and take over the presentation from this point. This is, this is pretty much how we work.
As you saw the schedule, you know, we started, we signed the, we actually signed this consent decree back in 2014. Construction didn't start until 2016. When we built those rates, we built in the $350 million in capital. We built in money for additional operation and maintenance expenses. The interest rates at that time that were used in the rate study were in that 5% to 6% range. And, and when we started the actual work, we were able to get bonds in the 3% to 4% range. And that means a lot. Structuring of those bonds, the interest rates on those bonds have allowed us, and the timing of those bonds, we didn't need those funds. We started rate increases in 2013, and we didn't start construction projects until 2016. And so all of those things worked in our favor. And that's why the city is very optimistic that even with the increases from the original estimates to the current estimates, that we're very optimistic that we won't have to look at adjusting rates. We obviously will be watching that very closely. As, as Patrick said, we are getting ready to finalize phase four of the sewer system assessments. Those numbers will start coming in from that high-level view as to what the costs of that portion of the work will be. We'll take that into consideration with what they start seeing in phase five, which is just getting underway, and that will give us a better picture on what those costs are. Reevaluating some of the capacity projects with some flow monitoring we're doing right now may also reduce some of the anticipated costs that we have at this point. So we're very optimistic again that we will be, you know, working towards completing this program, you know, within the rate structure that we currently have that the council approved in 2013 with those increases that go to 2022. You know, the financing of the consent decree is something that can be a little bit precarious because it's based on the markets. We have worked very diligently, I personally, along with Shurika, have worked very diligently over the past several years to ensure that the rating agencies are very happy with us, that when they give us guidance, when they tell us that we need, here's our concerns, we try to address those concerns. And we have done so with upgrades in, in our bonding, you know, with our bond ratings. The, you know, but that's all, you know, a market fluctuation, you know, those, those interest rates can change. The other things are that we, the, the water and sewer department, while it's in an enterprise fund, is dependent on the city of Shreveport. And so our credit rating is tied to the city of Shreveport's credit rating. If there is a downgrade in the city of Shreveport's credit rating, then we will also be downgraded irregardless of our performance as an enterprise fund. And so that is very critical, very critical for us as those lower interest rates, you know, allow us to do more bonding and, and get more out of the money that we have. So, you know, we're looking at a number of things. Again, you know, we're, we're hopeful that the assessments in phase four and five will render some better pipe. We're in somewhat newer sections of the city. We're not seeing quite the, the magnitude of, of the problems we've seen in some of the older parts of the city. And, you know, so we're, we're looking at all of that, along with, again, we're currently flow monitoring, which is probably the best time ever to do flow monitoring with all of the rain. It's the only good thing I can say about the rain, to see what that impact is on the modeling and so we can take those, you know, we've made a lot of changes and a lot of fixes in phase one. We're trying to realistically see how that has affected overflows and the flow in that system and we, how we can apply that to other phases and maybe tone some of those improvements down. Got it?
Yeah. I'm going to wrap it up and just to mention it is a moving target and the staff, you know, the primarily engineering, water and sewer administration, we're always watching the cost and we're always watching the rate structures. So, one of my first meetings with Mayor Perkins, he asked me to look and see if there's any cost-saving measures that we can take with the consent decree. And we've already started to implement many of those. This slide mentions a few of those. Like, like I mentioned, we have a program manager, a consultant hired to oversee the design and construction. We're changing who the program manager is. We're trying to get additional staff in the engineering department. That is the position we discussed yesterday. It's on the agenda today. We're currently in the process of requesting a time extension from the DOJ and the EPA. When, when the original schedule was, was put together, you know, everybody anticipated much smaller program. It's, the size of it has, you know, the size of it has been realized to be much larger than it was originally estimated. And if we got more time, we could do, we could spend the city's and the taxpayers' money wiser and make better decisions than when it's all compressed so tightly. We're going to look to eliminate redundancy and excessive procedures out in the, the construction field to, you know, to save the contractor's time, saves the city time, but still keeping an eye on quality. And we're, we're constantly revising the specifications and standards that, that we That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions? Councilman Fleury?
Barbara, I have a question for you first. As I remember coming on the council in 2015, you correct me if I'm wrong. The EPA came into Shreveport and found that we had violations of problems, and so that kind of built up. And they fined us, what, $1.25 million?
No. They fined us, the original, in the negotiation process, there was a lot of back and forth. Some of the original numbers EPA had or DOJ had were in that $2 million range. It got whittled down to $1.2 million. The actual fine that we paid was three, was $650 million with $325 to DOJ and $325 to LDEQ.
Now, you said $650 million.
$650,000.
I'm sorry, $650,000, yeah. I had that issue earlier today with a B number and an M number, sorry about that.
But, but what, what my point is, we had a big fine, and so somebody in the city negotiated with EPA and got it down.
Yes.
And as I remember, you were going to Dallas and giving EPA updates.
Yes, sir.
And, and did they give you something back in writing saying how we were doing?
We would go, long history, beginning, when I, I first started working for the city of Shreveport in 2007, in January. The city had a policy because we had had some issues. We had been under a consent order many years prior to that on the sewer system where they kind of just sort of nudge you, you need to, you need to start making some changes, you need to start fixing some things. So the city had a policy of traveling to EPA once a year to make a presentation, look at what we're doing. You know, obviously, we, we can't fix it all in one day, but we are making progress. We are making progress, taking that positive story to EPA. And we continued to do that while I was the assistant city engineer. In 2009, we received a phone call that EPA was really just looking at cities our size. You can, you've read the news stories, you know, it was Atlanta, it was at New Orleans, it was Baton Rouge, and they were looking at these very large cities. They were all getting consent decrees, and then they started targeting those, you know, that next level down. And they were looking at, at miles of pipe and how many sanitary sewer overflows. It wasn't about how good you were doing, how much money you were spending. It was literally the numbers that we were self-reporting. And they said, you're next on the list. And so we began those negotiations with, we, the city hired outside counsel, they hired a consultant to help us with that because obviously that's not something, you know, internal staff had done before. And we worked from 2009 to when we closed the deal in, in 2014.
When was the last time you met with the EPA?
It was late last year. We tried to go after a major milestone, like I brought a copy, you know, my paperwork, I brought a copy. We, it was sometime late last year. We schedule, we, and after the consent decree started, we were meeting about once every four or five months, and now we're at about once every six to eight months.
Who, who was given the task of coming up with the percents? We have something before us showing the rate increases per year from 2013 to 2022. Who developed that, that scenario? Those percents?
The percents, we had a consultant do a rate study that took into consideration how much money needed to be spent to fix the problem, how much money would be needed for additional operation and maintenance needs. Because a consent decree isn't, as Patrick said, it's not just about money, capital, it's about operation and maintenance. And so we had a consultant do, do the rate study. They provided a number of alternatives to the infrastructure, the city council infrastructure committee, and we had lots and lots of meetings with that committee. And we proposed, at the end of the day, we're going to have to do something to fund this. You can't sign a consent decree without, it's a contract, and you can't sign a contract without the money behind the contract. And so we worked with counsel to come up with what they felt. And so, we worked with counsel to come up with what they felt was the best rate increase scenario.
Well, I was under the impression that we hired an outside engineering group to monitor each contractor. Is that not true, you know, how they were doing on the job, to make sure they're doing the job?
Well, that's, that's the...
Maybe I don't explain it just right, but they're the overseer, kind of making sure...
Yes, that's the program manager that Patrick alluded to, that we're, we're out for RFS and will be changing.
And my last statement is, I just, I'm like the rest of people's report, there's $350 million and then maybe a seven to a $1 billion override. I've read, you know, up there where it said, "To the best of your knowledge" at the time, but did we not have some engineers, those outside services, somebody helping us to develop that we could get at least close to the target? I mean, this is, this is breathtaking, that we're going to over, be over on the projects.
Well, if, if you look at the timeframe and you look at what we had available, the EPA and DOJ don't give you time to do assessments and then do the consent decree. The, the assessments are in the consent decree, and that's why I have my show and tell. Sorry. This is a portion of, and engineering used to develop a, a report called, what we called "The Book," and it was all of those projects that we knew about that we didn't have funding for. And this is the, at the, you know, at the time, and this is just water and sewer. And at the time, the water, the sewer component collection system basically was about $200 million in 2012. And we use this, plus some projections and some estimates, you know, we, we don't know. That's what we had. This is the assessment for Phase One. It's online, anybody who wants some light reading over the weekend, but this is the assessment for Phase One that was done as a part of the consent decree. When you go and you TV every stitch of pipe, all thousand miles, right now, we've done Phase One, Two, Three, and Four, basically, so four million feet of pipe in the City of Shreveport have been TV'd, smoke-tested, dye-tested, visually inspected, and when you take that closer peek at your system, you're going to find everything. And that's what we're finding, and that's the, the cost of the, the work.
Thank you both.
You're welcome.
All right. Councilman Bush.
Mr. Froggen, Mr. Feuston, thank you for that update. I, of course, wasn't on the council when it received the $350 million estimate, and so I just want to understand, when that information was provided to the council, did the engineering department or whoever was responsible for providing the estimate make clear that it was a, a very rough estimate based on limited information? Was that conveyed?
Yes, that was, that was conveyed. You know, we, we gave them that report, that it was a report that they had been used to actually getting year after year, and, you know, when they asked, "Where did our numbers come from?" I said, "This report," and then some, some, we inflated some numbers to, to account for capacity upgrades, we just made estimates. We were not, the timeframe that we're given for these negotiations and to lock this in is, you know, they want something right up front, and you can't do the type of work and get those types of cost estimates without doing what we're doing right now.
It's not possible to know what the cost is going to be until you've gotten into the ground.
It's buried infrastructure. It, it's a little easier to, you know, when you can see it, you can assess it, but you can't see it. And we're finding stuff all the time. I would love to, to sit down with some sewer videos and just, this is what your sewer line looks like under your street. People really don't have that concept because it is buried, and it's not thought about until it's a problem. When we did presentations to council at the time, you know, we pulled some TV video because we, you know, we have two, we, well, I think we only had one TV truck at the time. We have two now, and, you know, pulled some video, and, you know, it's impressive, some of the things you see and, and don't see, and some of the problems that you have that are just lurking under the streets. And it, and it's extensive. Our infrastructure, a lot of our infrastructure was built before 1960, and the, the material of choice back then was concrete or clay. And concrete doesn't do well in sewer applications because it deteriorates, and clay is very brittle. It's very corrosion-resistant, but it's very brittle, and it's, you know, not, we don't put in clay pipe anymore, let's put it that way.
And tell me again, please, your best estimate today of what this work is going to cost? What is that number?
The numbers that, the engineering group that has looked at, you know, the first three phases, the fourth phase that's coming out, I mean, I think the numbers was $1.1 billion. We are hopeful, again, that's why we're doing some flow monitoring right now, because some of those improvements are in capacity, and we're hopeful that what we'll see with the before and after for Phase One, you know, how much have we affected it? What, can we apply that to other basins where we can scale down some of those capacity improvements? And we're hoping to get that number down.
Do we have higher confidence in the $1.1 billion number than we did the $350 million estimate?
Oh, absolutely. We have, we have three full-blown RMPs plus reevaluations completed, so, you know, three out of five of our basins are fully completed, is all the way through design. And so, yes, we do have more confidence in those numbers. And you have to understand, we even started bidding Phase One, the cost for the, the projects were astounding. We rejected bid after bid after bid in Phase One, and, and some of the council may remember some of that, because we were getting these astronomical numbers coming in that no one had anticipated. A lot of that was due to the work being open-cut, where you're, you know, and, and we were getting one, two, maybe on a good day, three contractors tops bidding our projects. And when you have that lack of competition, you're going to see prices that are somewhat inflated.
Is, is there a, a budget or some discreet analysis, analysis in a report supporting this $1.1 billion estimate?
We, we've put together a summary of all, of all, of all the calls.
Is that something you have provided to the council or could provide to us?
I could, I have not.
My request, Mr. Froggen, Mr. Feuston, and to the administration, is that if, at any time over the next four years, we begin to lose confidence in our $1.1 billion estimate, if for any reason we think that the price is going to exceed that in any meaningful amount, I would appreciate being advised as a member of the council as soon as you know that.
Absolutely.
This is, of course, as I said, I wasn't here when the $350 million estimate was initially provided, but it, it is breathtaking, as, as my colleague said, to have a project that you think perhaps to no fault of any staff is going to cost $350 million, and then be told that it's going to cost $1.1 billion. There's, there's nothing that anybody in this room can do about the fact that we've neglected our infrastructure for generations. We've got to deal with the situation as it is, but to the fullest extent possible, I would like to have as much information as you have about the projected cost of the work, so that we can make the best decision we can for the city. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, Councilman Brapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me express my appreciation. I think the, the presentation was very enlightening and gave, gave us a new perspective of what's happening, and why, why such detail has been put into this. But I have a couple of questions. You mentioned earlier, I think, Mr. Feuston, that the, that some of the work was determined on the age of some of our pipes that was made by certain materials. Since, in latter years, we've been using a different type of material for our sewer apparatus. Are those, are those pipes being evaluated as well as the other, the older ones for, for contamination?
All of the, with the consent decree, we are evaluating every pipe in the City of Shreveport, whether it was laid 100 years ago or last week.
So, all the new annexation neighborhoods, all that?
All of that has to be assessed as well as a part of the consent decree. And so, we, again, the, the portions of the city that we've been doing have all been, mostly been comprised of older piping materials.
Yeah. So, to go to Phase Two, how, how are you determining, how are you determining what neighborhoods you're going to, you're going to proceed with? You have, you have, based on what?
The, the order of, this goes back to consent decree negotiations. The city is made up of a number of drainage areas, areas that drain, that take all the sewer in that area, and they drained one point, and then they either transfer directly to the sewer plant, or they transfer to another point. And so, these drainage basins, we reported to the EPA, you know, how many sanitary sewers, sewer overflows we had for the previous five years, in addition to our estimated volume of sewer loss to the environment in those basins. And EPA, EPA gave us the priority list on which basins to attack, first based on those and based on income level. They looked at, at lower-income neighborhoods that had higher, and that's where we started, and that's frankly why we started in the Cedar Grove Basin. It was one of our worst and, and, and most economically, you know, challenged areas. And so, we started with that area first. And the, the order of priority was not, it was not ours to make, it was done by EPA.
And that, and that certainly explains, you know, visual why, why certain neighborhoods are being affected at this time in, in a lot of our constituents, and some of the neighborhoods that you, that you, as referenced, are, are really inconvenient, but they understand. But they are asking, what's the, what's the, what's the requirement once their streets and sidewalks and yards has been disrupted? Are they required to, to replace and make, and make that, their properties whole again?
No, sir.
They're not?
The, the, the project replaces anything that we take up. If we have to dig up a road, if we have to dig up a sidewalk, somebody's front yard, I say front yard, it's the city right-of-way, but people treat it as their front yard, we restore it to the same or better condition.
Trees as well?
It depends, if the tree should be there or not. And it depends on if it's city right-of-way or private property, and if it's private property, it depends on the servitude rights.
And in, and in, and on the streets, if, if they have a concrete street, they wouldn't replace it with an asphalt section, would they?
Not necessarily. Each, each situation's different as far as the street. But typically, you know, we don't, we don't have an asphalt street. Lots of times, it's a trench that goes all the way down the length of the street, and it's not quite half of the street, it might be a third or a fourth of the street.
Yeah, I know, they, they do sections and dig it whole or whatever.
We're going to, we're going to replace that, that trenched area with, with the same material. If it's an asphalt street, it's going to be asphalt going back, concrete street, concrete going back.
Again, it's, I mean, your presentation's been very enlightening. So, you meet with EPA occasionally, you know, quarterly at least. Are there any other oversight, the DOJ come in and see if the work's being done adequately, properly? Or they just rely on the project manager?
They rely on our reports.
On your reports.
I do not know of a, a site visit that they make.
They don't, they won't show up. So, there are measures that guarantee that the, that the, that the work, whether it's a replacement, whether it's new or is adequate, and is, and is sealing the, the contamination area.
Yes, sir. And they, that, that big binder that Barbara put up here, they, they get all of that. They get, they get everything and review everything, all of our documents. That's, that's part of the requirements.
Yeah. Likewise, the other councilman, you know, concerns were overrides over, you know, knowing where we are, how we can live within what is projected, and not be challenged with some other unforeseen expenses. So, thank you for your job that you're doing, and we look, we look forward to continuing in this endeavor. I think we'll be okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Councilman Booth.
Is there a, a list of, right now, the current subcontractors for the project manager? Is there a list of what, I've seen a report somewhere, I don't know if I got it from y'all, where the list, what the current project manager pays out or what their budget is? Is there...
With dollar amounts, that's, that's probably the report that purchasing generates, I'm guessing. It's just a black and white...
Yeah, I've seen it somewhere, I just can't seem to find it. I wanted to ask a couple of questions on it, but I'll, I'll, I'll get with you at a, at a later time on that. It was confusing, there were some bumps in, in like what was budgeted, like one company had like $600,000 budgeted in January, and it jumped from $600,000 to almost a million for one of the subcontractors. And I, I just needed to understand, we had one that jumped from like, from January from $4 million to like $10 million, I'm just going off the top of my head, and, and I thought I had it in an email, but, but I don't, so, I'll get with y'all on that, because I need to understand and wrap my head around why we're, from one month to another, starting to pay subs, millions of dollars, you know? But I'll, I'll get with y'all on that later.
Okay. All right, Councilman Flora.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions based on things that we discussed in the infrastructure meeting, but also things, the feedback I've gotten from constituents. One is about the contracts that are going out, I, I was just reminded of this because of Councilman Butcher, but because of the cured-and-placed pipes that we're doing, you said, if I remember correctly, that we don't have anyone locally that can actually do that type of work? Is that correct?
Installing the actual liner, that's correct.
Yes, okay. So, so that's why those, some of those contractors or subcontractors are coming from different locations outside of this area?
Yes, it's typically the prime contractor because that's the bulk of the contract.
Okay.
And yes.
And that you are working towards some sort of mechanism that will allow us to know the locality of contractors, as well as how many of them are from the Fair Share Program, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing was that we're going to be looking later on at this, this position, and if you could articulate to us why this is a necessary position right now? Like, why, how and why is this going to actually be economically more feasible than not hiring this position?
Sure. What's up on the screen? That's the Phase Three schedule. Phase Two looks very similar, Phase One looks very similar, and those are not $50,000, $200,000 projects, those are all $10 million, $7 million projects, they're huge. That's, and the program manager is tasked with overseeing that. It, it's a large task. I think there's, the program manager staff is hovering around 44 people right now. It's over $100 million a year in projects that we're executing. Currently, we have one person to oversee the program manager. The program manager, that is a very large contract that the city is investing a lot of money in every year, and for one person to oversee that along with their regular duties is not sufficient. They're, you know, they, they get bogged down. Because one person is not sufficient, it creates lots of big issues. So, they spend all their time dealing with the big problems, and they don't have time to look at the big picture and to look at efficiencies.
So, so day-to-day work is suffering, day-to-day workload, and then they're not able to focus as much as necessary on this big $100 million project as well?
Correct.
Okay. What does this do as far as your current staffing or understaffing situation?
It helps, but not enough. We are understaffed, and we're looking at, so this, this would just address the consent decree, this would help with the consent decree, but it's, like I mentioned yesterday, we have three divisions, water, sewer, streets, bridges, drainage, and development. In that water and sewer division, there are still several other vacancies, an engineer, an inspector, a drafter, and, and this is not a small group, that's probably about 40% of the group.
I feel like I'm putting you on the spot a little bit about this, and I appreciate your diplomacy, considering that it's a lot, there's a lot of work that has to get done, and I'm like, totally like, I think I'm catching up hard to ask you all of this. But you're understaffed, this position is considered competitive pay, but it's still on the lower end of competitive pay, am I correct? The $120,000?
It's, it's a great salary, but for the, the person that we're looking for, it's probably not enough.
And then the other positions that you have open, are those considered competitive pay as well?
Yes.
Competitive enough?
The, the engineering salary is a competitive pay, and it boggles my mind why we don't need applicants for that. I haven't figured that one out, but, but we are... But, but we are looking at going to the HR board and making modifications to our entire engineering structure from, from the inspector to the construction manager to, to create an engineer intern position, to civil engineer, to assistant city engineer, all the way up. I don't know if you have time, but...
I feel like you look enough at your numbers and at your work for efficiencies and I don't think that you're just like trying to pad your department in any way, but I just wanted to put all that out there to give people more perspective on what's happening.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Booch.
Okay, I found it. The report is called the Architect and Engineer Contracts Report.
That's one produced by Purchasing.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, and I hate to call out people, but these were the, these were the two largest ones that I, that I need some clarification on. Williams Creative, and I'm assuming, is this what CDM Smith contracts with them for?
They're a subcontractor to CDM Smith.
Okay. Williams Creative, the budgeted amount for January of 2019 was 660,980. For February, that number jumped to 1,203,380. So that's almost doubling that amount.
Mm-hmm.
There was a company called Integrated, and this was the most shocking to me. In January, that number went from 3,282,70 to 10,6630. That is amazing to me.
Sure.
Are we hemorrhaging money in this?
No, um, I'll have to look into it, but at first thought, it may be just the way the numbers are reported, or it may be a fluctuation in the workload, but three to 10 does not look like a fluctuation in the workload, so.
That's...
I'm, I'm thinking something's off, but I, I can get you an explanation.
That may have almost, if, if we're in that much need of oversight of this, that may have almost got my vote to support 170,000 extra dollars. I mean, seriously, if, if we're that far off and we're hemorrhaging this kind of money, you know, I mean, everybody's just gonna have to be mad at me for, for creating another 100, you know, 170,000 job, but I need some clarification on this, like quickly, because I just, I, I think we're hemorrhaging money.
Councilman, if I could, if I could interject really quick about that. So, I, I've seen some of these contracts come across my, my desk where the change orders have already been way, way, way outpaced the initial bid and it's extremely troubling. That's one of the reasons why in the cost savings slide, you see that we've published an RFS to, so that we can just pretty much start anew with contracting. You know, the prime, the, the project managers, subcontractors, you name it, to get better estimates upfront rather than having to do these change orders. But on the backside of it, and I always ask this question when I have to approve a change order is, what, you know, how is it gonna affect the timeline because DOJ is also watching this?
Right, yeah.
So we don't wanna get, no, 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 I, I, I'm just saying, I agree with you completely. So that's the reason why I think that this, this RFS is out, will give us an opportunity for us to start anew. We couldn't help what was going on in the past. Like I said, these change orders that I'm having to sign aren't even the first in these cycles of growth. So, I think that's a pretty good start for us on getting, getting control of, of that type of spending.
Were, were these, do you think, change orders or were these just things, I mean, would y'all have any control over CDM Smith making these large changes or?
We, we don't make change orders with CDM Smith. There's typically an annual contract.
Okay.
But this year, it is not annual because we're pursuing hiring a new program manager. So, uh, they, they puzzle me, I'm, I'll get you an explanation.
Patrick, these numbers are, I mean, we're looking at in a month, an increase of, geez, what, eight, eight to nine million dollars? 'Cause that was just the first two that struck my mind as being crazy. Well, I mean, we're looking at some major money there. I just, um...
Yeah, I mean, th, these are not monthly numbers.
Uh, is, my next question, and I hate to jump into this because we're not to that section yet, but after seeing this and, and, is there any way that this engineering position could be put under the internal auditor?
Logistically, I don't know.
Just to give it some separation, not, not to say that I'm, you know...
That, that, that's the intention of this position, is to drive herd over this program and...
It would give it some independence.
Dig into it and check for all the efficiencies.
It would give it some independence a little bit. Um, I, I, you know, I don't know if that's even something that, that could legally be done to create that position and still have them in your, but, but also have the auditor look at it as well.
My initial concern is this, if this position is in the audit department, they may find the issues, but I need this position to also execute.
Right, I understand.
And I don't know if an auditor can execute the, the engineering work.
And that's, that's... That's not, that's not a knock to you in any way.
Oh, I understand.
These numbers to me are just, I'm just flabbergasted. So, um, okay. But like I said, you, you may have just uncovered, this may have just earned yourself an extra vote for your, for your position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Councilman Bruff. Yeah. But I would like to, I would like to, if you can explain why, why, why they jumped to triple and double in, in those fees over a short period of time, I think that would be helpful in the interim. But I want, I want to follow up on the question that Councilwoman made in regards to fair share participation. Do you, do you know specifically what, what type of fair share participation that we have in the consensual work?
I do. I don't, I don't have a summary I can present to you off the top of my head, but we have ramped up our procedures dramatically with, with the new administration. Previously, the department was not involved, now the department is involved and overseeing to make sure that the, the fair share subcontractors that are reported are doing the work. We're working with the fair share office to develop better reporting procedures that are needed.
Okay. And, and, and I certainly, in her reference, that local, a lot of locals can't be primed in doing some of this major complicated work, but, but certainly we have minorities here in town that has dump trucks and cement trucks and finishers. So I'm saying that it would, it would be our expectation, and I think the mayor mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, and a new standard has been established that we're gonna be looking at fair share participation in, in all of, not most of our work, so.
That's our goal.
I appreciate that, but I thank you as well and we, we, we'll be giving some reports on, on how we're utilizing those minorities.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Nicholson.
I don't want to take too much time, Mr. Fralong, having you educate me about the reports that Councilman Butcher was just mentioning, but he mentioned integrated management services as one company whose contract totals went from about 3 million to 10 million in one month. Is that a change that your department is involved in approving?
That is, and I, I'm not sure what this number reports because there, it's not a monthly number.
Okay.
It, it could be a change in the annual contract over a year, but that, that number's still really big. So I, I really need to dig into this before I can give any sort of educated response.
And I, yeah, I appreciate that, I don't want you to give an answer off the cuff, but your, your department is involved in a change in a subcontractor's contract of that nature?
So, CDM Smith, the program manager, they, you know, they, they came to the city in 2012. Their contract has been supplemented every year, annually. At that time, they submit the breakdown of, of all the costs which include these subcontractors. So at, at that time of a supplement is when we review these costs.
And how long has CDM Smith known that the city was going to issue a request for services to replace it?
This has all been moving very fast. A couple of months, as, as long as we've known, as long as we've, you know, since we've made it happen.
I just, I'll let you do whatever research you need to do and advise us outside the council meeting, but if CDM Smith knew that it was going to be replaced two months ago, I, I just don't understand why it would be pushing changes to integrated management services contracts to the tend of an increase of 7 million dollars. That's not clear to me why that would happen.
We typically spend 10 million dollars on, on the entire program management team, so that's why 7 million for one sub is, just, just seems off to me. And it seems like a, if anything, an annual estimate, so I'll, I'll get some information on that.
Appreciate that.
Councilman Booch.
Just real quick, what, what would Williams Creative and Integrated be used for?
Williams Creative is a PR firm.
Right, right. What would they be used for? Are they the ones that did the dump, pour the grease down the...
They do that, they do the door hangers, they do our signs, they do our newsletter, any, any public outreach.
They help with different, like, art, there've been some technical articles that they've helped with where they've kind of taken the science language and made it user-friendly.
Use it, okay. I just, I just wanted to get clarification, and then Integrated, what, what do they do?
This is a new, new yard sign we're rolling out anytime there's excavation. We, we have large project signs, but they can't be at every dig site.
Right.
So we're gonna throw out a little small sign to inform the citizens of what's going on and who to call at, at every single dig site. And that's something that Williams Creative put together. IMS, they typically are providing the RPRs, which is the modern term for inspector, resident project representative. So, they're providing inspection, some of the inspectors.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And I hate to put you on the spot, but those are questions that...
I hate to put you on the spot, you didn't mind.
Both got holes in the pen.
All right, well, I appreciate both of you all coming up with your presentation.
Thank you very much.
That's it?
Yeah, Chairman, I have one more presentation. Sorry to hijack your meeting, but I want the Chief Technology Officer to come up for a moment now that that's complete. Before he gets here, I just want to say, you know, in sum, this is a massive project. I appreciate the council's diligence in reviewing it and making sure we get this right over the next couple of years financially and just for the betterment of our community. It's literally the drinking water. It affects the drinking water in our community, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you for having me up here to answer, why am I here? Just a little bit of background, I was confirmed on January 23rd, that is 34 business days or 49 calendar days since confirmation. I have already worked nearly over a week of overtime already, largely to the detriment of my own family. Over 100 meeting requests, my sent email folder totals 900 responses, and I have taken over 70 pages of handwritten notes as I explored the various departments. My job is very different from an IT director, and the city's report has never really had one, so there was a lot of work to get done when I got into the office. Previously, IT was a reactive department largely supported by service delivery, or largely supporting service delivery and viewed as a necessary cost center only. The way my position is a little different is that it allows us to be strategic with technology instead of reactive and, and consider strategy over tactics. And I, and to be clear, I added no additional costs to the budget. So, I actually have about 50 technology businesses waiting on me at 4:45 to go talk to them for a smart city workforce analysis here in, in the convention center. So I'm gonna whiz through these. I have this written down for everybody afterwards if you, if you wanna go line by line and ask me any questions later. So in the last 34 working days, I have accomplished the following. I have reviewed departmental budgets top-down, from top to bottom, and have asked for what I call a quarterly reconciled budget. What is budgeted or encumbered, what has been spent, what is expected to be spent and what money is expected to be left over by end of year. I will create initiatives to either fund other collaborative city goals with any leftover budget and streamline and reduce costs further, or return that budget to the general fund and right-size my budgets for the future. I've been helping coordinate and review both the new water billing system upgrades as well as MGO, SPMR and UBS rollouts. I've evaluated the current desk phone costs with my management team and saved nearly $19,000 per month. We will also be reviewing the city smartphone contracts soon in the same way. I helped the IT staff understand modern project management tools and techniques, including optimizing our staff meetings so that we can begin to track progress transparently and efficiently. I've pressed our team to begin planning the full rollout of voice-over IP phones as opposed to only Phase One. The sooner we get to full rollout, the sooner we save nearly $1 million per year across the city. I am not accepting generic deadlines like 18 months or so. I am having them go task by task and identifying what needs to happen. I have set up a knowledge transfer wiki to begin ensuring our policy and procedure of the IT department is well documented and knowledge is not only in the minds of those who steward them so that it is never lost again. We have a, a large problem with knowledge transfer. When somebody leaves, they leave with decades of information. I've evaluated all currently deployed applications with staff and begun setting strategies in place to replace severely outdated ones. To remove licensing costs, we are, we are paying almost full salaries for outdated software. I have sought out shadow IT positions throughout the city departments to more easily hire and consolidate some tech positions. And shadow IT is basically IT positions that are in other departments that weren't really, we weren't really aware of or didn't know about, or could more easily be supported inside of the IT department. I've evaluated and reviewed all current infrastructure and security needs. Audit and reports are pending. Again, I've been in the chair for 30 days-ish, so, um, let's see. I've provided contacts, planning and research to roll out endpoint security that allows us to be safer from hackers. Working on initiatives to create biometric two-factor authentication for all key personnel so that passwords alone do not become keys to the kingdom. I'm evaluating all staff positions and rewriting them into modern roles to position our city for far more responsive department, departmental and future needs of our city. Many of the roles have, are as old as the department itself and haven't been updated for several decades. I've coordinated with IT staff, the CAO, interim CAOs, SPD, SFD and Cato 911 for first net internet connections in our squad cars and fire trucks with a rollout completed ideally by end of 2020. Our current internet connectivity provided by slower-than-dial-up radio-based modems incompatible with, is incompatible with modern records management software, and that software is required to be rolled out by mid-2020. Immediately, I notified the administration of the savings from phone lines indicating that ideally preference would allow the operational budget required for the first net modems and squad cars. And just as an aside, the capital expenditure required for the hardware is being, which is tens of millions of dollars, provided by Cato 911. It has been sitting there for roughly a year or so, and no one had actually asked all these departments, how might we get to this only $200,000 a year operational budget to activate all of that? And that is what I'm talking about here. Currently, SPD has to wait five to 10 minutes for responses on simple lookups or tie up a dispatcher to do the same. And SPD has to deal with paper data that takes a long time to actually enter into the RMS with no current solution in place to easily eliminate the paper. So, that's what we're exploring today. Reviewed multiple vendors with SPD for RMS replacement, which is required to be deployed by next year. Again, this will enable our SPD to do far more in the field using mobile devices and squad car laptops. After attending the South by Southwest Mayor's Summit, I have actually identified several more disruptors in this space that might be able to lower the cost of the $1 million expenditure for an RMS replacement. And just so you know, the RMS is over, it's almost 30 years old at this point, so it needs to be replaced to be updated to current standards. I've reviewed numerous contracts from various departments to ensure proper deployments and notify them of any low-cost alternatives. I reviewed every department's metrics to begin creating a strategy around automated metric collection and transparent display of metrics to administration, council and public. This is in line with the mayoral directive to begin actually analyzing the metrics for process and performance improvements instead of only just collecting them. I've identified from metrics collections what processes are manual and what are not. This is creating a backlog of workflow analysis and software deployments that will likely take years to implement fully. I've created the version one of the online version of the people's budget powered by an open-source business intelligence tool called Metabase that will allow the public, council and administration easy insight into the approved budget at any time. We've already been contacted by multiple cities asking how we're accomplishing it with zero dollars of expenditure. I've worked with the CAO to categorize budgets into understandable buckets so the public can, and council can quickly see where... can, and council can quickly see where dollars might be saved. Um, I'm researching how to scan and store thousands of documents into full-text searchable, into a full-text searchable database using free and open-source technology. I've reviewed and understand our current citizen communication management of the consent decree work just, just mentioned. Uh, initiatives, uh, are in place for creating a live map of projects that may affect citizens. Uh, this is pending a reorganization of my department, looking into tools to notify citizens via SMS and social media, uh, and I have plans for creating ways to verify contractors' work before and after via automated means.
This is so much word salad, can we just ask you some questions?
Um, sure.
Chair?
Sure. Councilman Fuller?
Okay. Talk to us an American about the metrics you're talking about and about the interactive map of projects.
Um, so, uh, the current management firm that is monitoring the progress, uh, they're using a tool that we could integrate to have real-time status updates of all complaints from citizens, um, and where contractors are at. Uh, that will require some pretty technical expertise to get done.
So that means like, someone complains about a thing happening on their street, and instead of just calling me, which I'm happy to take their call, but they can report it, and then someone with that is actually working in that department can go attend to that and give a real-time update to when that project is like, being taken care of?
That is the ideal. It will require, again, uh, GIS technologists in our department working with us to deploy.
Okay. So, like, when are you gonna, like, come back and be like, I need y'all to do whatever so I can restructure and have money to do these things? And is that something we can talk about in Infrastructure and GIS Committee?
Uh, certainly, yeah, uh, happy to do so. Um, we have an org chart in place that will be, um, my plan is to work with the HR board. I don't wanna give them a huge stack of papers to look through and approve in one meeting without fully understanding and having time to digest what I'm trying to get done in the department.
Okay, tell us more about the People's Budget stuff.
People's Budget, uh, version one is already in place. Um, we haven't launched it yet. I wanna have everybody look at it and take a look and give us recommendations and feedback. The tool itself, um, it will require a bit of deeper training, uh, for you, uh, but it will allow you to be able to point and click your way into a few clicks and design your own graphs that will help you analyze the budget yourselves.
So we can make our own pretty charts?
That's correct. You can make your own pretty charts, yes.
So we can have a, a version of the budget that is accessible for the public, that is easier to digest than just going through the PDF of all the things? You're working on, um, making data more responsive at the level of, like, GIS in the future? Like, that's one of the major reasons that you, we wanted your position in addition to having a regular IT department.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure that that's tangible for everybody, 'cause I get nerdy and excited about it, but you just, that was so much word salad. Okay, and then, um, was there anything else I wanted to ask you about? I think I have one more thing, but I can't remember what it was.
Well, you'll have time.
Well, no, 'cause he's gotta go.
Boach has had a question.
My question's very quick.
Oh, well, I can...
Okay. Are you?
Okay. Uh, real quick, Mr. Hanson, is there any, um, we were talking about the internet, and I'm familiar with what you were talking about, about the hardware being purchased by 911 and all that. Is there any way in your budget with these savings that, uh, that we might be able to look in to help the police department purchase some body cams?
Uh, any savings in my department for that?
Well, or is there any wiggle room in there for you to help, help them find some money for body cams?
I would love that. I mean, my goal is to be a more transparent, responsive government and to use technology to do that. If there are chunks of budget in my department that were over-budgeted or, uh, over-projected, uh, I will find them. Uh, we are going to have a quarterly budget review. Uh, this generally hasn't happened in the past.
Well, you know, that, that was a, uh, the last council meeting was pretty heart-wrenching there at the end. Um, and I think that, uh, I said after, after that, that, that I wanted us to work as a council in the next few weeks to try to get body cams for all of our officers any way we can. I've got a couple of ideas that I'm gonna present to the council coming up, but if you've got a little bit somewhere in there that you might wanna throw our way, that might not be a bad idea, so, thank you.
And Councilman, not necessarily in his department, but he's, as he said in his bullets, he's saving money across the board, so maybe the police department, the money that he's saving in the police department can go towards that as well. So that's, he's, he's just protecting his budget, but there will be savings in the police department as well.
Good, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Councilman Boach.
Mr. Hanson, I just wanted to thank you for the work that you're doing. I, I think you are, uh, dragging us into the twenty-first century here in Shreveport. Many of the changes that you, uh, have made in the IT department and citywide are long overdue, and I'm confident over the next four years, we're gonna realize significant efficiency and cost savings from your work, so thank you, Ken.
That's my goal, thank you.
All right, Councilman Fuller?
I just wanna reiterate that it's not just the cost savings, it's gonna be the satisfaction for all the citizens by being able to have things handled in a quicker way, but also, not just the citizens being able to have that response time, but I think that our staff in different departments, by having that access, are gonna be able to communicate things to each other outside of silos in a way that's gonna be really great for them and for us as citizens. And I'm really excited about that, not to be too shady, but when we get on the radio and have questions about why we're hiring people, even though it's not creating any extra space in the budget, I'm glad that we also have the opportunity to hear them talk so quickly, thirty-four days in, about what it is they're doing. And I'm not just saying that since I've known you and your wife and all that since way back, I like what you're doing.
Appreciate it, thank you. Um, I would just like to add, uh, again, you know, this position is a very consultative role. Uh, my goal is to find savings and efficiencies across the city, uh, and then harness those savings for even larger savings. So, uh, that is my core focus almost every day that I walk in. Thank you for your time, and may the force be with you all.
And with your spirit.
And, and I, I'd like to add, um, you know, not only was this a cost-neutral addition to city government, but I mean, everything that he's touched on internally that he's already providing to our city, transparency, responsiveness, cost savings, but also externally, we've already been featured in three national magazines where they're talking about technology in Shreveport. Um, all the big cities, all the mid-sized cities that are growing have either a chief technology officer or a chief innovation officer, and he is a clear symbol to the tech industry, to everybody looking at Shreveport, that we are being progressive. So, um, all of, every, if you didn't understand what he said, that sums it up for what the impact that he's having on our community.
Can we get a quick update on, like, the thing you're going to do right now? Explain what that is.
Yes. Uh, so, I collaborated with two nonprofits, stepped forward in our area, very focused on K through twelve education and even early pre-K education, um, as well as, um, the International Youth Foundation. They have collaborated together to, uh, with us to, uh, try and evaluate what a smart city workforce, uh, needs. And so, out of all of our technology companies and technologists that are being hired here, um, we have fifty people in a room at four forty-five, starting at four forty-five, rather, that will be getting together to discuss where their gaps are in the skills, uh, and then the two nonprofits will go out and find programs, new grants, et cetera, and kind of wrap it all up and gift it to our area, basically.
So we'll be able to create a more employable workforce, 'cause we're gonna understand where the needs are from the people that actually hired them.
That's right. That's exactly what I'm trying to do.
Tell them we're sorry for keeping you.
No, no problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Uh, anything else, Mayor?
That's all for me, Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to recognize Pastor Monroe Robinson, who's present with us today, and also school board member, uh, Don Littleton, uh, he's also here with us today. And also, uh, Mr. Chair Chief, uh, we'll just do the update for the next meeting. I know you gotta go, so we'll just do it for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You, you sure, Councilman Green, you don't wanna, you just wait till the next meeting?
Yes, we'll wait till the next meeting.
I just wanna do it now?
Okay. Well, we're doing now, Chief, you can come on.
Yeah, 'cause he's here, so we might as well... Yeah, Chief Raymond, can we see you up to the front?
Uh, thank you, Chief, for coming. I just want you to give an update on the, uh, last council meeting. There were some statements that was made, that was not accurate as to the DA having the case, and I just wanted to get an update on the, uh, police-involved shooting.
Certainly. And again, I wanna apologize to the council for my statements not being accurate. Uh, I said last council meeting that the, I believe the packet was with the district attorney's office waiting on review. Uh, I was corrected later that afternoon or that evening, I talked with our investigative command staff. The packet has not been sent to the district attorney's office yet, and I have talked with the district attorney since, since that last council meeting. Also talked to the Caddo Parish coroner, Dr. Toma, as of this morning, most recently. We are awaiting on his ruling as to cause of death and toxicology report before the packet is sent to the district attorney's office for review. So the DA's office has got to know what the cause of death is, as well as, um, what the toxicology reports might indicate. Uh, Dr. Toma has also requested some additional information from our investigative staff. They're providing him some videos and some reports, uh, before he makes his ruling. Once we get his ruling, then the entire packet will be presented to the district attorney's office, and they will have the opportunity to review the case, uh, before we can really release any additional, uh, details.
Okay. Chief, also, uh, maybe on next council meeting, you can possibly give us another update if there's an update.
There's changes, yes, sir, certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, that's pretty much, well, since, while you're standing up here, I just wanted to ask you about the CRU, uh, vehicles, the blue cars, if that's okay? Uh, what's, where are we now with them, and are we presently using them?
Yeah, so you know, we disbanded the Community Response Unit in order to, uh, try to get additional, or try, we did get additional, uh, officers on patrol with that, uh, disbandment. The vehicles they drove were what we would consider an unmarked police vehicle, it was black and colored, just had emblem on the side. Uh, so they are being utilized in special operations conducted by Uniform Services Division where we don't want a marked police unit patrolling a neighborhood. So for example, if we have a, um, a, uh, an increase in burglaries or an increase in, um, violent crime, and we want officers to be able to drive through a neighborhood without criminals recognizing that it's a police vehicle, then we assign those out as appropriate. But they have not been allocated to a routine patrol function. We want our officers to be in marked units to say, "Shreveport Police, have light bars", et cetera, et cetera, but we are utilizing them in some of those specialized functions.
Okay, okay, that's what I need to know.
Thank you. Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted to ask that, um, not, not you, Chief, that, uh, engineer, Mr. Furlong, would be available at the end of the meeting for, for additional questions?
Mr. Furlong?
He had to leave, um, but if there are questions, he had to leave, but if there's any questions that you have, we can, you know, try to address them or we can get back to you.
I will get to the end of the meeting.
Okay, okay.
All right. We should, we should have gotten, uh, a report from Ms. Crell and Ms. Jones.
Yes, it's a Thursday.
Stated yesterday, and, uh, Mr. Thompson, if there any legislation to be added today?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have the following request to speak at this time?
Mrs. Buckles.
My name is Mrs. Buckles. I live at nineteen oh five Simpkins Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I came here today originally to talk about the, um, proposed sanitation fee, but in light of all this new information, um, and it is, I agree, it's overwhelming, I need to digest some things, but a bottom line, I pray, and we're asked of the council members, consider the smallest member in the community, whatever you've gotta do, if you had to trade places with us, would this be fair? Is this the thing that you would wanna do? Would you wanna be treated in this manner? So, um, everything else I had to say, I, I'm going to just basically flush it and just ask you again to just consider us, be fair about it, if you had to trade places with us. And may the true and living God do to you and more concerning whatever you do to the least of his people. Um, and I hope you, that you will make an assessment, uh, after everything gets in and you'll discuss all these things, and make management responsible. One of the things I did wanna talk about, make contractors responsible, people who charge premium rates but provide shoddy work for the city, make them accountable at their own expense. State leaders who abuse their power should be brought to injustice, placed in Angola, and their resources sold and put back into the state coffers, with Shreveport getting back their fair share. I wanna thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'm praying for all of you. It's a hard job, it really is, and based upon all the information that's been presented today, it, I'm, it's just overwhelming. As a single parent, managing finances and, and being in, in debt twice and allowed to come out of it through death of a spouse and divorce of a spouse, it's one thing. In less than three years, I was able to come out and, uh, operate on a cash-only basis. I see city government sometimes operating on the same principles, 'cause there are some principles in personal management compared to city management, but I know there's other extenuating circumstances, obviously, and even with, uh, repairs, I can have a contingency fund, but not to the tune of billions of dollars. So, thank you again for allowing me an opportunity to share. I'm going to continue to pray for you, and again, I just ask that you make the right choice, and character always is a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Councilman Green?
Ma'am.
Ms. Buckle?
Ms. Buckle, I, I'd just like to say, thank you for coming, and may God bless you. In fact, before the meeting, what you have just said, I talked to one of my colleagues about it, and you identically, if I, I'm not calling him on the spot, but you said identically what we talked about, and I just thank you for coming to share that with us, and God bless you.
Thank you for having me, be blessed.
Yes, ma'am.
Ernest Small.
I live at thirty-one twenty-three Exposition Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven zero nine, and I would like to relate to you, Mr. James E. Green. I have came here, and the majority of the people do not want you to take their money and owe their water for hostage. We say, "We didn't want eighteen dollars, and we don't want the seven dollars." In the course of a year, at Christmas come up in December, Thanksgiving come in November, most people don't have the city tax money to pay the bill, and if you don't pay a decent on the thirty-first, they charge you five dollars a day. That's, and by the time they get the income tax in April, that's six hundred extra dollars. What is happening in that money if you want the garbage man to get more money for his service? And the second thing, about us paying for body count for the police, I don't think it's a good idea unless it, they enroll call, they get a body count put on them, and then they cannot control the body camera until they get off work, so everybody overseas can see what happened that day. They shouldn't be able to cut it off, 'cause it's not a body camera anymore if they got control of it. Okay, and the third thing, Mr. Green, you was saying on this in two thousand and thirteen, that y'all assassinated us, just sent us to, what gonna happen, and gave us, didn't give us a chance to vote or hear our voice for it, just sent us this out for ten years. Now, we've been whole while this for ten years.
Mr. Small.
You made our bill go up fifty-five percent.
Mr. Small, step back just a little bit, 'cause we can't hold it. Okay, there you go.
Okay. Okay, and then you made our bill go up, the sewage go up fifty-five percent, not even telling us anything, just mailed us this. I kept it since thirteen. Then when you left, I was happy. Now you're back, same thing. But you have a very good day, but I hope you eliminate what you're trying to assassinate us and the whole lot of water hostage. And education and common sense is the final call. If you was a bully in school and didn't listen to the teacher, then you got the best job for you, little garbage man. And he shouldn't make more than a teacher, he make more than a... make more than a teacher. He make more than a lab technician. He making more than a x-ray technician. And Bogers City is eleven percent under the average nature, the nation average across the living. Shreveport is nine percent under there. So somebody ain't got their numbers right, and you can't compare a military base with a city across the bridge. Bogers ran by the Air Force.
Mr. Smalls, I hate to interrupt you, but I've committed to the public and to the council that I will enforce the time limits as consistently as.
Okay, then, well, then, then I'll finish. You got my, I got my point across. Education and common sense is the final call. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Green was first. Did you, you hear that?
I was just checking the record, see if I was here in twenty, was I here in twenty thirteen?
I just was wanting to know if Mr. Small thinks the garbage man will make more than the preacher. Because we believe in our church, keeping our preacher poor and humble. I said, do you think that the garbage man should make more than the preacher? Thank you, okay.
Councilman Green?
Thank you. Just for the record, I was not here in twenty thirteen. So I don't know how I get credit for that. I wasn't here in twenty thirteen. But the next thing is, I was only given a choice of paying eighteen dollars or seven dollars. We're gonna pay something. So I just thank you anyway. But I was not. No, sir. There are seven of us here.
All right, all right. We're gonna move on next week.
Thank you.
Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I think it's a real good idea that the meeting with the Playball in Shreveport, a purpose to enter into an agreement to fix up and renovate and operate the Fairgrounds Field, will be a very great and exciting moment. And the reason is, I don't know how many years that I have not been to a baseball game. It's been quite a few. However, I would sure, hopefully, like to get started back again one day as soon as this all works out. The reason I say this is because Joe Garish Yola, for a number of years, was calling a lot of baseball games and baseball fields, and did a great, superior jobs. I watched him on television many, many dozens of times, and he did a super job with other people who were announcing the baseball games in the stands, or in the announcement booth. Anyway, the thing is, I would like to see this work out for Fairgrounds Field. And considering that it will, I want to see it get underway just as soon as it can. If you should vote yesterday, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there are no further requests to speak concerning matters on the agenda.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to, we have the following appointments to be considered today. That's the chief administrative officer for Sherica Fields Jones, Spar Division's manager of administration, Chair of Rome, and the Fields Operations Superintendent Herman Hill III. I see two, I don't see Mr. Hill.
Yeah, Mr. Hill is not here. He had a work emergency.
He's out today. Okay. Hello, old Councilman Flur, is that a request to speak? Sorry about that. Did you want to speak now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman Flur?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, could you help me out here a minute? This Fields Operations Superintendent, is that a real person, or we just make believe that? I hadn't seen him yet. Have you ever seen him?
He was.
Do you know him?
Supposed to be here yesterday, and he had an emergency to come up.
Mr. Chairman, have you seen him? You laid eyes on him?
I have not seen Mr. Hill, no, sir.
So he could be a make-believe person, right?
Barbara understands that this would need to be postponed.
Somebody needs to be speaking up down there.
He had a work emergency at his current job, and he didn't want to neglect his duties there.
He ain't going out flying for another job, is he?
We understand that he is interested in working here, and he'll be here next time.
Our chairman has seen that, laid eyes on. I'd be okay to vote on it. But I just want to make sure somebody knows that this man is a real person.
Yes, sir. Barbara is here. She can provide some background, and, you know, she provided his resume. But we do understand that this could be postponed.
Not a ghost.
Mr. Hill is working for another firm right now.
Speak a little bit louder, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your kind of low voice.
He was not, he was not able to be here today. He is out of town, out of state, at a job site. And he didn't feel it prudent to, you know, just leave his employer kind of in lurch with a situation, which I'm just ecstatic about that level of loyalty in an employee. I spoke with him Friday night, very late, when he got home and then was traveling to Lake Charles to referee a basketball tournament. Mr. Patrick Wesley with Spar has actually met him before and is friends with him. So I do have some backup there.
We do have confirmation.
I do have some confirmation that, but we advertised the position, we took applications, we interviewed two candidates, and, but I understand.
That's fine.
I completely understand if council wants to put this off two weeks. It's not a problem at all. But I appreciate it.
If you recommend, and CAO has confirmed, and I'm good with it.
Don't leave it now.
I got Councilman Boucher, who I think wanted to.
I just wanted to vote on him separately.
Just called him up and voted on him separately. And Councilman Brapp?
Yeah. And I have sort of the same sentiments in the fact that I don't think we ever confirmed somebody that we hadn't met or interviewed.
Right. And I completely understand, and so does Mr. Hill. And that's perfectly fine to wait, to wait two weeks. We discussed it. I'm good with that. I know my current assistant superintendent, Mr. Chisholm, is not happy with that, because he's been bearing that burden in field ops for some time. But he'll be okay, and we'll get through it.
So you're confident with that postponement?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. So I'm gonna recommend that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Councilman Green?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, and also to Councilman Brapp, Mr. Hill is a real person. In fact, he from around your hometown. So he is a real person, and a most honorable person.
No dispute there, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Councilman Nicholson, do you have something?
Second, Councilman Brapp's motion to postpone Mr. Hill's confirmation, if he's made a motion.
Okay. So to postpone on the, Mr. Hill, we make a motion to postpone that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Been properly motioned by Councilman Brapp, and seconded by Councilman Nicholson to postpone on Herman Hill. Please vote. That motion carries with seven. All right. On CAO Sherica Jones.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Councilman Flur, and seconded by Councilman Brapp. Sherica Jones, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Spar Division's manager of administration, Chair of Rome.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by several of the council members, and seconded by Councilman Boucher. Ms. Jones, I mean, Ms. Rome, would you like to stand so everybody can recognize you? As we vote now. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the clerk needs the name of the motioneer.
It's been motioned by Councilwoman Fuller, and seconded by Councilman Boucher. Hooray, hooray for your old classmate. All right. Congratulations to both of you ladies on your confirmation.
I'd like to say that it makes me proud to be paying centenary right now, having a junior there that I've got. I just got to vote on two centenary students and get to serve with one. So congratulations.
Ms. Jones, amazing history. Mr. Thompson, there are no consent agendas for introduction or to be adopted. Am I correct on that?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Would you like to proceed with regular agenda items, please?
Resolution twenty-four to launch a city council investigation authorized by Section four.
Mr. Chairman, I move or you want the chair to remove this from, I just remove from the agenda.
We need a second, Anna Polly.
Okay, I need to vote.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Brapp, and seconded by the chair to remove number twenty-four. If there's no discussion on that, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution twenty-five authorizes execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with KTBS LLC.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Boucher, and seconded by Councilman Brapp. On number twenty-five, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution twenty-six authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Pinpoint Events LLC. There is one amendment.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I have added an amendment to this. And with that amendment, we would be proposing that we fund the twenty percent that has been requested, with the caveat that upon a gross of fifty thousand dollars for this festival, that we would be reimbursed for the hard costs and the staff, which should be approximately fifteen thousand dollars that would be reimbursed once they actually gross that. So do we just vote on that either way, or do we need to at least see if he's amenable to that?
No, we have to vote on the amendment, but I'm, but I'm wondering.
Before we vote on the amendment, do we want to see if, I know we need to have discussion, but do we want to see if the event?
I wonder how would that be determined? Who's gonna give us the accurate returns on that profit?
Can our legal consultant tell us something?
Hi. So if you vote on this amendment, the amendment says that the cooperative endeavor agreement would include this provision. And so if the other party does not want to execute that cooperative endeavor agreement with that added provision, then they do not have to. So your motion at this point, and resolution would be to authorize this cooperative endeavor agreement. If your amendment number one was to carry, then you would have that added provision. But they do not have to execute it.
Okay.
So have you spoken to them?
And, and most of our contracts have the financial auditing clauses in there that we can audit their records. And if that's not currently in there, then we should have it in there. We can, and we can amend that.
So this would be, if we vote for the amendment, then it becomes a take it or leave it, basically, on the entire thing?
Your amendment adds that provision to the agreement, and so it would be a take it or leave it for that party.
Okay. So my second motion, it take or leave it?
Is that motion on the amendment?
So moved to adopt the amendment.
Well, is this the discussion portion for this? I'm about to, I'm about to.
Well, we hadn't made a motion yet.
I'm about to, well, I'm about to ask if there's any discussion. But I didn't know if Mr. Snyder was here and wanted to come up and speak also.
Mr. Chairman, while he's on his way up here, can I just say what I, say?
Yes, sir.
I want to, I want to tell everybody here that, that, like I said yesterday, I believe that this event is a good thing for the city of Shreveport. I want us always to be open for business. I also, though, echo what Council Lady Fuller said, that we've got to start looking at our expenditures. I like that she took the initiative, along with a couple of other council people, to talk to Mr. Snyder and come up with this plan that I think is, is a good, a good middle-of-the-road for us. But I don't want this conversation to stop here, because I don't want us to be here again next year at this time. We need to be treating every citizen that comes and wants to do this, nonprofit or for-profit, the same way. So, Mr. Snyder, I applaud you and any other entity that wants to come to the city of Shreveport and provide an event like this. And I also applaud my colleague, Councilwoman Fuller, for her hard work on this. Thank you.
I really appreciate this, and I think it's a great resolution to this. My one concern would be clarifying gross versus net, and what you're talking about, what source of income you're talking about. Because on an eighty thousand dollar spend, with a gross of fifty thousand dollars, we could still lose.
Right.
Well over thirty thousand dollars. So what are we exactly talking about, gross or net?
Okay, we could, then we can negotiate that too, since I did not talk to you about this before. We drafted this like after tacos at two o'clock.
I think it sounds, sounds good. I think we just need to line out what numbers we're actually talking about.
Because we could do net.
I would, I think if you said if it nets over.
What about if we do net thirty?
If it nets over thirty, then we pay it back. I would agree with that, absolutely.
Then what we're saying.
It would give us the protection on a rain out or whatnot that would keep the event secure and alive for the future, and to give it the potential to continue to grow. But if we go kill it one year, I would be more than willing to pay back the city.
Well, what this would be is that if you net thirty thousand, that what we're offering you is what you ask for in kind, plus the staffing of the public safety and Spar.
Okay. And I would pay back the police.
You would pay back the hard costs and the staff. And that would be just under fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And so can we, can we bend that on the spot to a net of thirty thousand?
Yes, council member, we were just discussing that. So if you guys could just give us some clarity on exactly the wording you would like, we can certainly do that.
One question, one question I have, does that include his management fee? I mean, is that, would he be paying himself? I mean, does that include the management fee?
There's not in the budget. I said that there is no management fee. We don't currently pay ourselves a salary for any of the work we do.
I just want to make clarification on that.
So I guess we're saying that it would be where we had the gross of fifty, we're changing that to a net of thirty thousand, and then we're keeping the hard costs and labor the same.
I mean.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman Brapp?
Ordinarily, on a, on a, on a good scenario, that this is a good event, what are you anticipating as a, as a net profit?
So we have, the only way I can tell you that is to give you our history at this event.
Yes.
The first year, we put about thirty thousand into this event, and I think we netted roughly about six thousand dollars as a group. The second year, we upped our spend to close to fifty thousand dollars, because our goal is to create great events for the city, not to get rich. And we netted about eight thousand dollars. And this year, we're spending over eighty thousand dollars on the event, and growing to two days, and bringing regional talent. And we're really taking a lot of risk to create a wonderful event in our community. And if we somehow netted over thirty thousand dollars, I would be running to pay back that fifteen thousand dollars and cheering on my way to the bank.
Should I make it twenty? Because I'd really rather just have my money back.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have said that.
Well, you can do whatever you feel necessary. I'm just happy to have some protection to keep the event for the community.
Since we're all here, what do y'all think?
I want to give us the best chance of recouping some of this.
Then I'm gonna stay twenty.
It's fine.
Now, I'm doing this with, and I also want to say on the record that you should expect legislation coming soon that will allow for us to create proposals and application processes for nonprofit and for property events, so that we have consistency moving forward. This is something that we want to venture toward. Because this is, this is something we've never done before. And we need to, if we're gonna set a precedent like this, we have to expect that we're going to very quickly see many organizations coming toward us for this. And we're gonna need to have some very, some, some really explicit criteria. In order to make sure we got this straight, we're gonna, I think, motion to delay this to the end of the resolution, so we can get this redrafted? Is that what we need to do?
That's one way we could do it.
Okay. So we need to fix the. Okay, so we need to fix the language?
Okay.
And then we'll vote on this a little bit later.
Thank you.
Councilman Green?
Excuse me, sir. You were saying that you all are not trying to make any money? If you're not...
I didn't say not trying to make any money. I said, we're not trying to get rich on these events. We're trying to, to bring great events for our community. If we're able in our risk, like I said, we're risking eighty thousand dollars of our own money at this point to put this event on. Of course, we would like the opportunity to make money off these events, of course.
My, my question is, is there any reason why you all didn't decide to be nonprofit?
We did. Early on, we talked about it and, and the key decision was made was that we wanted to put our time and effort into these events and not to worry about paying ourselves salaries or anything else and that we were going to do this and put as much of the money and the time back into the events to make them great. And we just decided the, the way we felt com- most comfortable doing that was in a for-profit model and not subcontracting out to other people to do the alcohol or to sell the drinks or anything else and to keep it all in houses. Our numbers are as clear as you'll ever see because it, it's simple. It's easy to look at and you can see right where every dollar goes, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor Parker?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to quickly, because I missed this discussion yesterday. I was late to the council meeting, so I just wanted to add my perspective about this. In my legal education and legal experiences in working for a corporate firm and working particularly in corporate governance, there is a very, very fine line between nonprofits and profit, for-profit organizations. Just because somebody's a nonprofit, if you actually look at a lot of the performers, they're actually paying their executive directors, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I don't want us to get too hung up on that and we actually technically do not have a precedent of not supporting for-profit organizations as we see as two for-profit organizations in Resolution twenty-five and Resolution twenty-six. So I think we just like need to be a little bit tighter on our wording here. What this does is allow us to evaluate organizations that come to us on a basis, you know, on a, every time they come to us, actually. And I think that that is correct and that is right because new organizations spring up in our city all the time and if there's a way for us to support them and support their growth, especially when it's providing quality of life measures for our community, I think we should be open to that and we shouldn't shut the door. So I'm glad that we are moving forward with this or it seems as though we're going to move forward with this in some manner, but I just want us to, our posture not to be so hostile or closed towards efforts like this that brings tens of thousands of people to a park in our community, likely a lot of them from out of town as well. So that's the part I wanted to add about this.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Nichols?
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad we appear to have reached a compromise on this resolution. As I've said yesterday at the administrative conference, Crawfest is a, a very, has been and I expect will be in the future, a very well-done and well-received event attended by thousands of people in Bay Virginia Park, which is in Councilwoman Fuller's district, but very near to mine. Mr. Snyder and Mr. Nichols are both very capable, successful businessmen with a strong track record of hosting successful events. And so I, I do think with the amendment Councilwoman Fuller's proposed, this is money well-spent from the city's perspective. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman. There was some discussion about postponing this until the end of the meeting. Councilwoman Fuller, is that needed now?
It's still needed, please, if that's okay.
To the end?
For, yeah, can we push this to at least...
Just to lay it to the end, to the end of the, the meeting? Yeah, to the end of the legislature.
Yeah, to the legislation.
Okay, okay. So in that, to make sure I get it right, so in the event that it rains, then no foul no point, right?
Well, I just wish that y'all started thinking about some rain insurance, you know?
We, we have thought about it and looked at it and quoted it and, and we can look at it any, anytime you, you'd like to look at it.
Yeah, but if, but if it rains, our resource is not needed.
Right, that's, no, I'm just saying, that's what I'm just saying.
Well, we have, no, the rain, let's be clear, when, when we're talking about rain, we're talking about some, anything that would cause the event to lose money. When you look at the budget, I said, we have thousands and thousands of dollars that are committed to bans, to traveling, gambling and to many, many things that are not cancelable due to rain. So what, what we're hopefully trying to protect in this, in this resolution is the fact that we would have one bad year and it would cost the city the event in the future.
All right, okay. That's it?
Uh, just one thing. Next year, let's, let's do this a little earlier, then a week, a week and, or a week and a half in advance. I mean, we're talking about, you know, entering into this with KTBS, but they're coming to us in March for, for July. So, I mean, I would like for us not have to be rushing around and get this right next time. I think you and I talked about that. I, I want us to, let's start talking about this around November.
I, I do just want to be clear that everyone knows I'm not, I didn't come up with this to come up and ask you for money. This was a plan through SPAR and was supposed to be presented by SPAR and, and I was told that that would be presented by them to you. So, yeah, I, I did, I've never done this before. I did it exactly the way I was told to do it.
I think, I think next year, let's just kind of start maybe at the end of this year. Let's start October, November, where we'll have enough lead time to, to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Chairman, do we understand that Resolution twenty-six is postponed without objection until the end of ordinance number twenty-five?
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five, ordinance, private court given legislation.
The last ordinance, the last item.
Okay, okay, got it.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Thompson?
Now we're ready for Resolution number twenty-seven.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
It authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Shreveport Bojor Sports Commission. So move.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by the Vice Chair. There's no discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution twenty-eight authorizes Brunner Truck Sales, Inc. at Greenwood Road and Rice Road to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water system and authorize the mayor to execute...
It's been moved by the Chair and second by Councilman Green. There's no discussion, please vote.
Real quick, this is, this is one thing that I think the mayor and, and myself ran on and a couple of other councilmen. I like to see this inter-agency work to make the area better. I think that, I, I look forward to working more with Greenwood because West Shreveport's growing. I look forward to working with other communities and I, I think this is a, a great thing for us and so I'm, I'm in favor. Thanks.
All right. West Shreveport is definitely trying to, trying to grow. Please vote. That motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution twenty-nine amends portions of section two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shreve- of the City Council rules of procedure.
Yeah, explain, just, just, explain that to me again, please.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Number twenty-nine, can you explain that, please?
Rules of procedure. This is the one that requires the Chairman and Vice Chairman to be elected in January, I believe.
All right.
Yes, sir, and...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
There was also a technical amendment that we made distinguishing between the absence of a Chair or Vice Chair during the meeting versus a vacancy of the Chair or Vice Chair during a term of office. And the prior rule sort of lumped those two together and we separated those out and made, for better clarity purposes.
I got it now. I forgot which one it was. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
There's no other discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, we, we have several, we have several...
Nobody's up.
No, we hadn't made, okay. No, we hadn't mo- we hadn't made the motion yet.
Okay.
Nobody made the motion.
I'm sorry?
It hadn't been made.
Yes, I'm saying, so we, we just talked about the pre...
We had a motion just, I don't think we had a second.
Okay. Second. I'll speak on the question. Counsel. Thank you. And I, I have no issue with this except, you know, I want to be clear that in regards to, um, once a new council come aboard, our first order business, it will be in, in December where we elect our officers. That does not...
That doesn't change.
That doesn't change. It's just a, just a year except for the election year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we clear.
Yes, sir.
All right. No other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution thirty urges the mayor to meet with play ball.
I'm going to withdraw.
Second. It's been moved to withdraw by Councilman Butcher and second by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. And I want to be clear on that, that we do have some other options on the table. We just want to be clear with, with all parties involved to make sure we come up with the best decision for backgrounds field, so that's the reason for postponing or withdrawing at this time. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution thirty-one requests the mayor to authorize a human resources director to open an administrative inquiry into complaints made by employees of the Shreveport Fire Department.
How's the move, Mr. Chairman?
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Green.
Mr. Chairman?
We have Councilman Bradford on to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, let me, let me start off by saying this and I, I'm really sincere about this. I'm very proud of the new council. Each council has, when they're elected and come aboard, is faced with their own issues, their own challenges. And in, and in doing so, how they respond to issues and challenges, whether they are not of their own making or not, this council has been responsive to a lot of the issues that they didn't create, but, but, but for the best interest of the city, they, they have fashioned a process to, to make certain improvements. Now, the issue that we're going to face between now until we get a grip on this, and I'm, I'm referencing what I want us to do today. Too often, we have some, some departments, including this new council, have, have came into, into an understanding, but we have some departments that are pitting pennies to make, to make ends meet, to make sure that we, we can, we can, we can, we are, we are financially prudent and responsible for this city. On the other hand, we have other departments and entities of the city that are wasting And I think we're going to get there, but at this point, we have not identified all of the areas of waste and there are a tremendous amount of areas of waste. For instance, in discussing this resolution, because I, I requested from the City Attorney's Office some information regarding fees and services for, for litigation of, of various cases that has been brought before the Civil Service Board or before the Judicial Court, District Court. We are paying lawyers out of, out of the caboodle. We're paying lawyers to defend us and we're paying lawyers to prosecute us at the same, at the same money. We are paying lawyers on retainer and lawyers are sending us an invoice every month. And I don't know a lawyer except for John Nicholson, who I just met, you know, three months ago, who would say, "I'm not going to be billing y'all all this money." But, but, but at the same time, Mr. Chairman, we, we have to, we have to get an understanding of where our savings are, 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 are at so we can, we can at least try to, try to, you know, lessen it. I, I told you when I asked for postponement of the previous resolution in which I pulled this morning, this afternoon, that the, the appointing authority, who is the mayor, was the only entity according to civil service stature that could, that could launch such an investigation. And again, I'm not investigating individuals, I'm unless, I'm investigating a department. So this resolution, and I think with the help of the clerk and the City Attorney's Office, we think we have a, we think we have a process that could work and get us to, to the next step. And it is a tremendous, and I've been getting more since this has become a, a, an issue from areas of this, of the fire department that is, that is, that is raising issues of discrimination, bias, retaliation, harassment. So I want to just ask that we move forward with this. If we're going to, if we're going to be, be responsive legislators, we can't pick and choose. We have to have the courage to move on, on, on legislation that will make us better, that we can hold people accountable to do what is right for this city. I think this, this would give us some inroads to at least addressing one of the issues that we'd be facing over the next few years. So, Mr. Chairman, I ask your support of this, of this resolution. Thank you very much.
All right. Did, um, I guess we, I'm sorry, Councilman Butcher?
I just pushed it. What, what is the scope of this going to be, Councilman Bradford?
The, the process would be determined by the Human Resource, Human Resource. It would be an individual, my, my understanding is, it would be a confidential process where those that feel compelled to come forward to register their complaint against whatever the criteria that is mentioned, which is discrimination, penalized harassment, retaliation, those, those criterias would be presented to the Human Resource, Human Resource Department and they will determine the validity of those.
So, so basically the council really doesn't have any, there's not going to be a committee or anything?
Oh, no, 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 that's not, we won't be involved. It'll be something that they would handle and, and even the, the, the follow-up would be determined on how a report would be generated to come back to, to the, to the body.
And the scope basically deals with these personnel issues and the allegations? No, nothing, no more into the fire department other than just these?
No. If there, if there, if there are additional, if this develops something different, then we would have to, we would have to...
Come back and discuss that.
So, so if one of these, one of the people that have been discriminated against says, well, they, you know, they're taking money out of petty cash, just for an example, I don't even know if they have petty cash, but something like that, then that would have to be something. The scope of this is basically on the discrimination?
On the, on the, on the discrimination, racial discrimination, gender bias, harassment, retaliation.
Okay.
And again, Councilman, and I appreciate your questions, is that, and you, you mentioned, you gave an example, the remedy to that would not be determined by the Human Resources Commission?
Correct.
I'm, I'm sorry, the Human Resources. Okay, they were just, it's a fact finding for them to see if these allegations are actual, are actually happening.
Would a report be issued to the council at that time or will we even know?
There will be, there will be a report, but I'm saying that the, my, the, the agreement that we have somewhat is that the, the Human Resource Department, along with the City Attorney's Office, will be responsible for how that report will be generated and presented.
Um, I would like to make this just real quick. I have, I've received a few emails and letters from firefighters as well and, and some have been about retaliation and this was, so I mean, I, I think as long as we're following the law and, and our council and the, the city attorney believe that, that, that we're not breaking any civil service law or invading the chief's firefighter bill of rights or any firefighter's bill of rights, I would rather us go ahead and do this and, and finish it out where we know exactly what we're dealing with. So I'll, I'll support your resolution.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I think that's the premise of what we're doing. I think the city council, I mean, the, the clerk, the clerk has been, is very knowledgeable and valuable and the City Attorney's Office have given input, so I think we have... valuable, and the city attorney's office have given input, so I think we have a document that we can trust that will not put us in any jeopardy.
I want us to work with the mayor as well to try to eliminate some of these contract attorney fees that we're paying out, because I understand there's a civil service attorney and attorney for the, it's just, it goes right back to the whole, you know, the license to steal type deal. I think we need to look at that at some point, but anyway, thank you.
I'll go ask the administration or the mayor if he had any comments, or Mr. Thompson?
I'll make a comment after the vote.
Okay. I just want to be clear, when we were talking about this, and I saw this, I was, and I could be wrong, just seemed as if we were getting HR to be involved in something that they were already, should have been involved in, and I don't know if they had had this previous conversation with the people who were involved. So that's why I didn't understand where we were going with this at first, but just wanted to make that clear. So if there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mayor Bradford?
Before I start, is there, has there been any examples of this in the past?
When Mayor Hussey was mayor, our office tried to conduct an investigation of the fire department, and it was not entirely successful.
I'm going to have to call him and ask him how that went. The reason I ask, the reason I ask about that is because right now I don't have a blueprint for what we're asking for, so I would ask to sit with Councilman Bradford and Councilman Boucher because of their experiences and what they've gotten, what they've heard from firemen, and ask that my fire chief sits in as well on that meeting with HR, just a stakeholder, so that we can actually draw out what we want to get from this exactly, because we're going to be creating this from scratch, it seems. But I also want to consider the operational impact of, I don't know if they're doing interviews, you know, I don't know what this looks like, so, and going forward, I will support it, but I think we need to have a bit of a work session before we move forward into looking into the fire department, and I'd like the civil service board attorney or representative to be present as well.
One suggestion is maybe we could call a, well, I don't know if that'd even be, I agree, I think we need a game plan and a scope of what we're doing here, because I don't want to be going down rabbit holes. I want us to investigate the exact allegations that we have and keep it at that, and make sure that everybody involved is protected, because we don't need any additional litigation. So, you know, I agree with that, and you let me know where you're, and I'll be happy to be involved in that, and I think the chief, the chief does need to be there as well.
All right. And again, Mr. Chairman and Mayor, you're talking about developing a process, and certainly your involvement, as well as the city attorney's office and the HR department, are all part of that developing process. But I will say again that this body has a judicial responsibility, as well as a moral responsibility, to ensure that those who work for this city are treated fair and right, and that while state statutes and civil service laws somewhat hinders us in some way, it does not preclude us from trying to remedy some of the issues that is causing us. You said additional, I'm saying as time goes by, you would get a very clear understanding of how civil service, and it's not anybody's fault, but the state legislatures who have imposed these sampling blocks in our way, that we have to pay all which ways, and we are trying to preserve and be as conservative as we can with our tax bills, dollars, and this will help us at least, you know, research how we can, how we can put some measures in place to lessen some of this. And like I say, if you take legislation from our state legislatures, I've already contacted some and say, "Listen, we, you guys are tying our hands, you know, and we are compelled to pay for something that we have no control over, and that's not the way democracy is supposed to work."
Yeah, and Councilman, I'm with you lockstep when it comes to fairness, making sure people are treated equally, and cost savings, I completely agree with you. But on the cost savings part, you know, when we talk about saving money on litigation, I just want, you know, I trust you that this is permissible, but I do want to get a lawyer for a second opinion to make sure we don't generate more litigation by trying to stop litigation, if you know what I mean.
Well, I don't even think we're at that point yet, but that's later on, but the initial investigation of all this behavior, of this culture, really existing, and then how can we remedy it?
And I'm just saying, to even identify that, we have to pierce the fire department in some manner of interrogation or discovery, and I just want to get an attorney, from our attorney and the civil service board attorney, to say, "You can do this," and yeah, I'm...
Everybody has rights, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Everybody has their rights, if we want to violate their rights.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Thompson.
Resolution thirty-two declares the intention of the city of Shreveport to proceed with the issuance of not to exceed $100 million of water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series, making application to the state bond commission for approval and providing for other matters in connection. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Depp.
Mr. Chairman, we've just received from Mr. Furlong and Ms. Featherston a report indicating that the cost of the consent decree work that the city has been undertaking for several years is going to vastly exceed the initial estimate of $350 million. In addition to receiving the report that we received during the council meeting that I met with Ms. Featherston and Mr. Furlong this afternoon, if anything ought to be a two-reader, I think it is a resolution authorizing the city to incur $100 million of debt. Mr. Furlong indicated that he has a report that he will be able to provide to the council, which substantiates the $1.1 billion present estimate for the cost of completing the consent decree work. I recognize that this resolution in all probability is going to pass, but I just suggest, given the magnitude of what we do every time we authorize the city to incur the debt of this enormous scale, that we take a couple of weeks, we let Mr. Furlong provide to the council the report or the other documentation substantiating the $1.1 billion estimate for the consent decree work, and that we, after reviewing that and satisfying ourselves that the process is fully in order, we take this up in two weeks. And so for that reason, I make a substitute motion to postpone this resolution for two weeks.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
May I add to, I didn't see the request to speak button. I just wanted to let the council members know that what you have on the agenda right now is not the end of the, the pieces of legislation that will require your approval. In April, you will have a two-reader on the agenda, which is the final ordinance, and there is a public hearing that has to be held, so you'll have a piece of legislation acknowledging that that public hearing was held. So we do have several more pieces of legislation that will have to come before you for approval on both of the $100 million and the $20 million bonds before it can actually be completed.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Depp.
Well, given that sequence of events, there's no harm in a two-week delay, would my suggestion.
Councilman Boucher?
In this resolution, is this where we're naming the?
No, sir.
No, that's okay.
I'll have further comments about that, but that is not in this resolution.
I still keep my second then to delay it.
Sure, yeah, just for future reference, I like what this resolution actually does, is that it gives us permission to make an application to the state bond commission. They do have a deadline for their coming meeting. The issuance of bonds takes a couple of weeks, excuse me, a couple of months to actually be completed. I do want to ask our municipal advisor, what is the deadline for the state bond commission application deadline, just so that you have that information as well? And she's pulling that information.
This goes back to the whole deal that I was bringing up with Crawfests. I wish that we'd have had some lead time on this, where we could have discussed this a little bit more in depth. Like Mr. Councilman Bradford said, this is a new council that is, I think we're working very well together, and we just got to, we're just doing things a little bit differently. And I wish we'd had a little bit more time to be able to discuss this. I don't want to ruin any type of application or anything, but I, you know, I just think that we probably, there's just too many questions that I have, and Mr. Furlong's supposed to give me some information on all this money going out, and I mean, I just, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with this right this second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to explain our part in this. We would not have put this on as a one-reader if it would have been required us to, you to authorize a contract. This is just preliminary, these are steps that must be taken, you will have the opportunity later to decide whether or not you want to go through with the issuance of the bonds. So that was why we put it on as a one-reader. That does not prevent you from postponing it, of course, but that was the reason it was put on the agenda in this fashion.
And I do have a date for you, the deadline for the state bond commission application is March the 20th. It will be up for approval at the state level and at their April meeting, so that does give the council a couple more months to still decide if you want to issue or not on a final ordinance.
Councilman Bradford?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that was my intent. It clearly says that it would allow those potential persons who would like to be our agents to make the applications, and then, once the applications are made, then we would have to determine whether or not we want to move forward with issuing these bonds. But I think I did not want to delay or impede those who are interested to go ahead and make their applications.
Councilman Gray?
No, I'm just taking my mail.
All right, so which one is on the table first?
The substitute motion.
Okay. It was, substitute motion was, well, we still, no, we had a first and a second on the first already.
On both, on both. Councilor Nicholson and Councilor, they motioned substitute.
Just making sure I was correct on that. So we're on the substitute motion, which was by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Boucher.
And that was to postpone?
To postpone, sorry. That motion fails five to two?
Previous motion, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green on the previous motion. Please vote. Motion carries with six.
The next is Resolution thirty-four declares the intention of the city of Shreveport to issue taxable water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $20 million for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of constructing and acquiring additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system of the city of Shreveport.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman, I tried to reach Mr. Washington earlier. This one requires a public hearing on April the ninth, and it also requires the advertisement for four weeks, I believe, once a week, and I wanted to be sure about who had the responsibility for doing that. I think it's the bond counsel, but I wanted to get his, to understand that.
Mr. Washington?
Good afternoon, council, mayor, and just like last year, we'll handle the publication side of it.
You will handle it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to March the 26th, 2019. Resolution thirty-three employs professionals with respect to the issuance by the city of Shreveport of not exceeding $100 million of water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series for the purpose of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system of the city. Resolution thirty-five employs professionals with respect to the issuance by the city of Shreveport of not exceeding $20 million of taxable water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series for the purpose of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system of the city.
Is there a motion?
Still move.
This is introduction.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Bradford. Move for introduction. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say briefly before the vote that I intend to introduce the council's consideration at the next council meeting, an ordinance requiring that we follow a request for proposal process for selecting all the professionals who provide services in connection with bond issuances of this nature. These transactions generate hundreds of thousands of dollars of fees, and we need to, like other municipalities, follow a process that ensures we are selecting the best available professionals, and also that we are not hiring more lawyers than are necessary. And I want to say, because I have some friends and colleagues in the audience who have done this bond work, that I don't make this suggestion because I think that they are in any way not qualified to do this work, they have a long experience doing it, and I know they are, but I'm concerned about process. I do not think we should have a system that allows the unilateral selection without objective consideration of qualifications of professionals who are paid large sums of money, and that is my view with respect to how we should select lawyers, how we should select insurance brokers, how we should select everybody who provides services to the city. This is not an unusual or a unique process for a municipality to follow, as I indicated yesterday, and I indicated in email correspondence to our colleagues on the council this week, the city of Atlanta, as recently as 2016, issued a request for proposal for bond counsel. And when you know who's going to be the bond counsel, who's going to be disclosure counsel, who's going to be the underwriters' counsel, how much are those people going to be paid, and are the payments made to all those professionals going to be fair in proportion to the work that they actually perform? Adopting an RFP process for selecting bond counsel services and the services of other professionals who provide work for the city in connection with bond transactions will be another step in the direction of good government, and there really is no downside from the city's perspective to doing so. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Boucher?
I would prefer that we postpone all of this, but obviously that's not going to happen, so that's the reason for my no vote. I don't, I just don't feel comfortable right now with any of it, borrowing the money right now, I just don't feel like we've had enough time to look into it, and I know it's a two-read on these, but I'm sticking by my no on these, just because I just don't feel comfortable with the whole process. Thank you.
This is introduction.
I know, but I'm not voting. Okay.
All right. I had a question for, I would say the administration, but to the city attorney, on a professional service, do we have to have a RFP? I mean, is it required, or can we do, or are we supposed to have a RFP, or can you have a RFP on it?
So currently, under the charter, a professional service is not required to have what it's phrased, competitive bidding, but you can introduce an ordinance and pass an ordinance to require an RFP, as Councilman Nicholson is proposing, but currently, no, it is not required.
But we can, as Councilman Nicholson has proposed, we can do that and change the ordinance, what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay.
Chairman, can I, oh, well, no, I'll wait after. Yeah, I just want to ask a question really quick, Karen, what's the difference between we don't have to allow competitive bidding versus an RFP? Does that mean that in the face of the charter, we're saying we are going to competitive bid? Is it allowed? Is it allowed? Like, I don't, it sounds like the charter says we...
Yes, sir. The charter says that, it's not required to have competitive bidding for a professional service, which that would, that's in line with bid law. Bid law would say that you don't have to have an IFB, an invitation for bid, for a professional service. So at the beginning of that charter provision, it states that the council by ordinance can change that process. And so an RFP is different than competitive bidding in the sense of competitive bidding is an invitation for bid. You take the lowest price. You look at a request for proposal that you have other factors that you can look at.
Thank you. And my next comment, Councilman Nicholson, with this particular professional service, suggest your suggestion in putting forth legislation on an RFP process and considering the other professional services that are provided throughout the city, I want to know, like, do you know today where you would draw the line? Where would you stop short? Or do you want to just completely change the precedent of the city, the, and, you know, I guess add another level to state bid laws going forward across the board?
Mr. Mayor, I don't yet know where I would draw that line. I will say that these bond transactions are discrete transactions that generate hundreds of thousands of dollars of fee, and so they are particularly well-suited to a request for proposal process. The city, of course, hires all kinds of professionals for all kinds of reasons. I do not think that the city should employ an RFP process for every professional that we hire, regardless of the amount of money we have to pay that professional or what they do. I think that would be unnecessarily cumbersome. But I do think that for transactions of this nature and this scale, whether bond issuances or other large-scale transactions that are request for proposal service, the use of an RFP process would be an appropriate practice.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Thompson?
We're now under introduction of ordinances. We have one, ordinance number 26, to revise Article 4, Division 3 of the Code relative to the duties and responsibilities of the Deputy Chief of Police. So a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we introduced this, but I have a question.
Councilman Bradford?
It's a second.
Well, I'm not seconding, no, I'm seconding. Sorry.
Introduction. Second. And it doesn't require vote, is that right?
That's right.
But, Mr. Chairman, I just, I want to make two comments now. And again, this council has the privilege to do however we want to do it, but it's always been a courtesy that we would introduce legislation and let those that present those issues, those items, a chance to defend why they're doing what they're doing, you know? So I would hope that we not break away from that tradition, that we would not at least give council members or the administration an opportunity to put their agenda, to put their item on their agendas to be, for consideration. My question regarding this particular item, who could tell me if Chief Crump, after his SIG leave, decided to come back to work for the City of Shreveport in a police capacity, is there anything that would prohibit him from coming back? Who can answer that?
I'm sorry, I just got this. Can you repeat that one more time?
My question is, Chief Crump is on medical leave. If his medical leave expires and he's decided to come back to work, is there anything that would prohibit him from coming back to work in or at a position comfortable to what he left or what he's now entitled, entitled?
That's a question for the Civil Service Board. I don't know that off the top of my head, Councilman. Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. Would you yield?
Yes, sir.
Do you remember when the previous administration under your cousin Cedric fired...
Why you gotta say Cedric? Why you gotta put my...
Fired Chief Mulford. You recall that? And then, we didn't wait, in the next administration, they, we hired Chief Wolverton. And we always wondered, because the first one's charges were dropped.
Right.
And so he came on board. He came back on board and we had to pay two chiefs.
That's true.
Two chief-sowers. And we thought perhaps hindsight, if you remember, we might have discussed that your cousin got a little too quick there, and maybe we got a little too quick filling the position. So I just bring that as a thought to you, that, you know, we, maybe we need to wait and see what Chief Crump's going to do.
Well, and that was my concern regarding adding or amending duties and responsibilities for this position. So it's an introduction. Give me two weeks to look into it, but I know who I'm not going to answer by.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I changed Florida way kicking on me.
Yeah, I got my two cents on that, but I'll hold it. Mr. Thompson? Would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
First is ordinance seven and nine. It was postponed until March the 26th.
Okay.
Show move.
Wait, see what?
We're gonna, we're gonna delay the game until the 26th to go from there.
So this is to postpone, right?
Yeah.
It's currently postponed until March 26th.
I'm just making sure I'm reading it, and I was just making sure that's where we're going from what I see. But I did want to say that I do think that, I think the hotel has been, you know, waiting and been patiently waiting for a long time, so I don't know if anyone else has spoken to the, up here has spoken to the owners over there, but I just, I feel like it's been...
We have.
I just feel like it's been a long time.
I agree. We, one of the owners attended the infrastructure meeting. And we've had further discussions. They understand to some degree where we are and why we're there, and yes, they are frustrated. But we're going to try to work with Ms. Swain at the DDA and with engineering to see how we need to move forward. But for the time being, it's, we're going to end up introducing new legislation to keep it closed, most likely.
And I get it, you know, this happened before me and before you, but I hate to hold off someone from being able to have more business if necessary, if needed.
I think the most frustrating part of the discussion was the acknowledgement that the exact bit of research and discussion we were having in that moment is exactly where we should have been in 2014.
Right.
I mean, if we need to have, if we, before we introduce more legislation, if we need to have further discussion, we can. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that, because I don't want to prolong that. And that's me, and that's my personal opinion. I don't want to...
Yeah, I get it. But it's too bad Mr. Furlong's not still here, but yeah.
Okay. All right.
Can a man go to his job in his own...
No.
All right, so we're going to postpone, but come back to this on 26.
It's already been postponed. We're now in the ordinance 17. Mr. Chairman, it amends portions of Chapter 26, Article 5, Division 10 of the Code relative to the creation and establishment of a solid waste enterprise fund.
Councilman Nicholson.
Sorry. It's clear to me from my discussions with my colleagues that there's not a consensus among the majority of the council for the passage of any sanitation fee at this time. For that reason, I'm going to move to postpone this once more for two additional weeks. My intention and hope are that we either make a decision to pass a fee in two weeks or we table all this legislation and look for other solutions. This has been on the agenda for long enough. We've all had an opportunity to receive extensive input from constituents to discuss this issue with each other, and I think the time has come either to move forward with a sanitation fee and a solid waste enterprise fund or to table the matters and look for other solutions to the city's financial crisis. So with that explanation, I move to postpone for two weeks.
For two weeks, right? Just for two weeks?
Two weeks, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
There's no other discussion. Please vote. I just wanted to say that I do agree with you. We need to move forward in whether we're gonna vote one way or the other on this fee, tax, whatever on college. We need to move forward and have this behind us and continue to move forward with city business. So, and keep in mind that we, so I think a lot of people know where I stand on this, and I've been there for a moment. I was there when it was introduced back when Ms. Tyler was here, and I still feel the same way now. Please vote.
Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 19 amends the 2019 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget. I believe this is for the Division Chief and the Department of Engineering and Environmental Services. It funds that position.
I would like to make a motion, a substitute motion, to delay this to the next meeting.
I second.
It's been moved by Councilman Boocher and second by Councilman Bradford to postpone to March 26th.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the reason for that is I would like to get a little bit more information from the, from some of the questions I asked today. My intent most likely is to vote for this, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Furlong's not here, but I would like to get a little bit more information before we push this forward.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, please vote.
Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, ordinance 20 is a companion to ordinance 19.
I move to delay this as well till the next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Boocher and second by Councilman Bradford to delay, to postpone until March 26th. If there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 21 amends the 2019 budget for the Grant Special Revenue Fund.
Some move.
Second.
Go ahead.
It's been moved by Councilman Boocher and second by Councilwoman Fuller. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 22 amends the 2019 general fund budget. I believe this is to transfer funds for a...
Some move. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Boocher and second by Councilman Bradford. Number 22. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance 23 amends and reenacts portions of Chapter 26, 74 and 94 of the Code relative to the solid waste collection fee.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Green?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to, one, apologize to the sanitation workers and to the citizens of the City of Shreveport. I've been asked to postpone this, and I am going to make a motion for it to be postponed.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Bradford to postpone. If there's no discussion...
Mr. Chairman, let me just express my appreciation to Councilman Green, because I'm the one that asked for him to delay this for two weeks. Mr. Chairman, and again, when I make a, when I make a vote, I like to be able to defend it back in my neighborhood, back in my district. You know, we've gotten several, we've gotten several, I mean, we get, even since sitting here, I've gotten texts and emails about this proposed, any proposed fee. I think we've all expressed our concern for our sanitation workers and wanting them to get the type of compensation that they deserve. But until we can research and look at where can we save and where whatever could be cut, I think it's a two-prone, a three-prone approach. Just adding another fee without cutting something or without having the ability to eliminate something, I think, would be premature. And I think, you know, as we move forward, I think a little more time to look at some other issues. Like, and I think the council, again, is very prudent in looking at things that we need to do to correct some things, to move forward with some things, to make good government for everybody. So I appreciate Councilman Green at least considering postponing it until we can research some other things, and I have some ideas to research. I may bring forward some legislation that may can assist in how we can get to where we want to go as relates to creating more revenue for our city so that we can compensate our people more adequately. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Fuller?
This looks like a can getting kicked. If you want to get to actually making cuts, you vote the thing down and let him make the cuts. That's what he said a couple of weeks ago when I asked, where are we gonna cut? He said, we haven't looked at that yet. We're trying to see what y'all are gonna do. You're delaying the game. I'm going to cooperate with you, but that's how I really feel right now. You're kicking the can. We could vote right now. We could vote for or against. I've already told everybody and their grandmother I'm voting against it, and then we can look at the cuts. But this just suspends the game. We're just suspended in animation. And I'm frustrated. In case it wasn't obvious.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Boocher?
Ditto what, what Councilwoman Fuller said. I'm just, you know, I had kind of, to be honest with you, hoped we would have an up-or-down vote today. I was not going to vote for it, because as this goes along, my constituents are growing weary of it. They want some explanations of cutting. Where are we gonna cut? What are we gonna do? And Mayor, you and I talked about that yesterday. I really, I really would like to see us have a, where I can take this back out to my district and tell my constituents, hey, this is what the mayor's done. And I know you're working on it. I'm not saying that you're not. I just don't think that it's been too transparent at this point. And I just would prefer an up-or-down vote today, and let's go back to the drawing board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman, can I ask for clarifying, transparent on which front?
Well, just where we've cut our cost. I know that there's a lot of things that we're saying, you know, like, we said we cut cost on insurance, but we hadn't seen that we've cut cost on insurance. We've said that we've cut cost on this, but we hadn't seen that we've cut cost. I just would like to see, like I said, maybe a quarterly report of where we are, where we can say, hey, we are working, we're working to get this done, and we're trying our best. Most of my people in my district are not opposed to paying their portion, and I hate hearing this, that everybody says, well, you just don't want to pay for the service. They're not, they're not, if the service is really needed to be paid for, nobody has a problem with that in my district, if they can afford it. And I think that if we do pass something to this extent, that the elderly, the handicapped, the ones that are, need some type of help, depending on what we pass. If the immediate issue that we have right now, sanitation workers and getting them paid, then let's start talking about what we talked about yesterday with the recycling, to get them immediate help. I'm not, this is not a jump on Mayor Perkins in any way. This is just that what I'm hearing from my constituents is they want to see us cut things before they, we come to them with a unvoted for tax, and that's what they're hearing, regardless of what you want to call it. So I want an up-or-down vote, and let's go back to the drawing board and figure out how we all, and I'm not saying I would never vote for this tax, you know, but I want us to be sure that we have answered all our questions of our constituents. And right now, the number had gone from 60-40, now we're at about 75-25, so, that are against it. And I was elected to represent my people, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman, just really quick about the transparent, that buzzword can have a lot of negative connotations. There would be unprecedented disclosures for us to just, you know, dish out emails or whatever.
Mayor, that is transparency. I mean, that's...
No, it is, but what report would you require us to do? There is no savings report that's published until the end of the year when we talk about budget.
Well, maybe you could say, okay, this is what we've done. We've looked at, we have, I think Councilman Nicholson asked...
No, I agree with you, but...
Ms. Jones for a list of how many unfilled positions that we have right now and what that dollar amount, tell the public that. Tell them, hey, I don't plan on hiring these positions right now. Whenever we retire, I'm not going to fill these positions through attrition until we get our fiscal house in order. That's, that's the transparency I'm talking about. I'm not telling, I'm not saying that you have to tell everybody every move that you're making. making. I'm just saying that we need a little bit of transparency to show people that we are actually working. And, you know, I think people, I had somebody text me just a minute ago and asked me, "How much does the city councilman make? Y'all make ninety thousand dollars a year?" I mean, that's what social media does.
Is that a motion, Mr. Butcher?
No, it's not. No. But for the record, for the record, we mentioned, for the record, where everybody knows it's about twelve hundred and eighty-some-odd dollars a month, and I can promise you this, I'm working about eighty hours a week at the city council. So, the, the money is not, you know, it's just transparency, letting everybody know where we're at. And I understand the negative connotation to transparency, and maybe that was a wrong choice of words, I didn't mean to hit a hot button there, but it is, it is, people wanna see where we're at. And so I would rather vote it up or down, move on, and let's try to get a finance committee meeting together and let, let's start looking at where we all can work together.
Yeah, just the, the, again, it's a connotation, it's a negative connotation, and it just implies that we're masking something. I'm just letting you know, like, all the information about this is available. If you wanna ask about the savings of employees, we've provided everything that's been asked. But in addition to that, I will say, even with our cost savings, just to kind of remind, remind the council of the hole that we're in, we spent eight point four million last year on the subsidy for, for sanitation department, and that cost is going to go up next year. So even with cost savings, to bridge that gap and to try to replenish the reserve even to any degree, that is asking a lot from my administration. Even, I mean, think about it, last year, we didn't balance the budget. We overspent six million dollars from the revenue that we brought in. So not only are you asking me to balance the budget, but you're asking me to balance the budget and save eight million dollars. If, if, if it's comparing it to last year, that's, that's saying, "Hey, can you save fourteen million across the board in operations, considering the rising healthcare costs, wages, et cetera?" And that's, that's a pretty big ask, but you've already pointed out that we'll be talking about some hard decisions that we have to make with cuts going forward if this doesn't go.
Well, and, and that's, that's, that's kind of what we, I think we need to do at this point. I think that there has been some misinformation that's been floated around that has been proven to be wrong, and that has been factually backed up, that we have spent some money that we said we weren't gonna spend. And all that does is make, make the citizens not want us to-
What information? I'm, I'm just, I wanna get clarity.
We'll talk about that in a private setting.
Okay.
Well, it's already been, it's already been out. The transparency is, is out there. My intent is not to embarrass anybody up here, but if, if I feel like that someone is, that something has been misstated, then that's a discussion I need to have with the mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
And that does not equate to not being transparent.
I just wanna point out that yesterday, our new CIO, Ms. Jones, advised the council and members of the public that our audited financial statements, that is, our retrospective view of the, of the last year for which those statements are available, show that we didn't even have the three million dollar projected operating reserve that our 2019 budget shows. We, we have, in recent years, had a one to two million dollar cushion on a budget of hundreds of millions of dollars. And so I, I am, I fully support making every prudent cut that we can to the city's budget, but-
Postpone.
The public has got to understand that the city is an aircraft carrier and not a canoe. Okay? We cannot, and the mayor cannot, in his first few months of office, start slashing the budget without first getting a handle on the city's needs and resources. And it would be irresponsible for the mayor to attempt to do that. My perspective on this issue has, has not changed. We have a three million dollar operating reserve, which is no fault of the present council or Mayor Perkins. We have an urgent need to address that operating reserve. Almost every city our size in the nation pays a sanitation fee of some amount, and it is entirely reasonable, given our present financial circumstances, to ask our citizens to pay a fee sufficient to meet our immediate fiscal needs. And, and that, that is just, that's my perspective. It's not going to change. I hope that I can convince a majority of my colleagues to come around to my view. I don't know that I'll be able to. But if we are not able to do so, we will continue to operate in a fiscal environment that is very irresponsible, given the responsibilities that we have to the almost two hundred thousand people who live in the city and depend on the services we provide every single day. Thank you.
Councilman Bradford?
No.
I'm ready to vote.
The motion is to postpone, I believe.
For two weeks. March twenty-sixth, correct?
Right.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries with four.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into ordinance number twenty-four. It's a zoning matter, case number C dash nine dash nineteen. It rezones property located on the east side of Marshall Street between Fourth Street and Franklin Street from industrial mixed-use district to I-two heavy industrial district. I move. Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, second by the vice chair, by the chair, I'm sorry. If there's any discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
We're now into ordinance number twenty-five. It's a zoning matter, case number C dash ten dash nineteen. It rezones property located on the southwest corner of Jewella Avenue and Mervon Street from I-two heavy industrial district to C-four heavy commercial district.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, as agreed to earlier, we're now into resolution number twenty-six. I believe that amendment number one has been withdrawn. There is now amendment number two. Either the sponsor or the city attorney may want to tell us about that amendment.
So the amendment now reads that if Pinpoint Events reaches a net amount of income of twenty thousand dollars or more, they will reimburse, Pinpoint Events shall reimburse the city its hard costs and staffing costs as outlined in the fact sheet. And that's about fifteen thousand. And we've got the stipulation here, that amount of income is to be defined and determined as the total amount of revenue minus the total amount of expenses incurred. I think that my one concern now would be how we audit for that, since it's probably a lot of cash sales that day.
Councilmember, the contract does have a right to audit clause.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right. So move.
Second.
Removed by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Vice Chair Nicholson. If there's no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
We need a motion on the ordinance as amended.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Nicholson and second by Councilman Butcher. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, as amended.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items we have on the regular agenda. There is nothing on the table agenda. There are no appeals for today.
Okay. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees?
Mr. Chairman, we'll be announcing a audit and finance meeting within, for the next council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? And I don't intend to, you know, keep beating a dead horse, but at, at the previous meeting, it was requested that the young lady, Risk Management, would appear. Can she, can she made, can she be made available for the next meeting so we can bring closure to this? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
What, what was it?
Evelyn Kelly.
Evelyn, Ms. Kelly. The city, the city attorney said that she wanted, she wasn't trying to prevent her from appeal, from appearing, but she wanted to speak to her first. And I'm saying that that, that process of speaking to her has happened, will she allow her to come before the committee, as the chairman has called?
Okay. If we're spoken to. Ms. Purrell, can you speak to that, please?
Uh, yes. I had, had an opportunity to speak with her. It was my understanding that the committee was going to await any findings from the internal audit. That was my understanding. But if, if you would like her to be at the next meeting, just let me know so that I can advise her.
That's, that's what I remember for, for the internal audit, but I mean, if y'all, if it's up to y'all. Whatever I come up with.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember that stipulation, but is that, was that the stipulation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, on the audit committee.
That, that we would delay her appearance until-
Until the internal audit.
That was, that was the stipulation?
That's correct. You got it correct, Mr. Butcher.
I think so. I think that that was with the stipulation that she could speak to the, to the auditor as needed. But as far as appearing before our committee, I don't believe that we, we ever really discussed that until after the audit. But that, that Ms. Stewart would have access to her if she needed her during her investigation.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Fuller.
My question would be, I'm not a member of that committee, but my question would be, would you all want to do that in an executive session, since it may go into personnel? Okay. I just wanted to be sure about that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller, if I may add, that was part of my reasoning for not having her here at the initial meeting, and I explained that to the chairman of the committee and-
I thought that came up.
We could do that in an executive session, in finance, right? Correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
I will note that the internal auditor's report concerning this matter will be made public and should answer the questions that we have concerning Ms. Kelly's involvement in the insurance matters that have been discussed for recent weeks. And so I'm satisfied to allow the process to take its course before the committee takes further action.
Okay. All right. Any other council member, reports from officers, boards, or committees? Mr. Thompson, is there a clerk's report?
We just have the items that are on the agenda that we discussed yesterday, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And Mayor Perkins.
I don't have anything.
No additional, any other council member have any additional communication?
No. I'm good.
All right. We have the following public comments. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, Ms. Clark.
Versa Clark, seven six two six Tampa Way, seven eleven oh five. Mayor Perkins, thanks for the eloquent inauguration speech and your concern for blighted areas, but this is not the first time we have heard that blighted areas will be focused upon and dealt with. The nineteen fifty-six master plan also spoke of redevelopment of blighted areas. The Cedar Grove and Eden Garden Community Associations are wondering when something will be done about the increasing vacant lots or adjudicated properties. The homeowners in the community are becoming more and more aware of the adjudicated properties are costing them in the value of their property based on their proximity to the adjudicated properties. According to a calculation used by the East Baton Rouge Redevelopment Authority, if the median home, home value in Cedar Grove is fifty-seven thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars, and your property was a hundred fifty feet from an abandoned property, your property appraised value is four thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars less. At three hundred feet, three hundred, three thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars less, and at four hundred fifty feet, three thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars less. Here is what Lynn Clark, no relation, Executive Director, Habitat for Humanity, said about reversing the downward spiral of blight. Quote, "We built forty-five houses in a five-block area of Scott Unveil. The appraised value, one of the house, homes was eighty thousand dollars when we started, but the last one appraised for one hundred eight thousand dollars just four and a half years later." Unquote. The associations also know that the Cedar Grove community as a whole is one of six opportunity zones in Shreveport. We know that this investment incentive will not last forever. We need the expertise and resources of CERA, Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority, to be on the model of the East Baton Rouge Redevelopment Authority, as stated on page eleven point two of Great Expectations Shreveport Cato 2030 Master Plan. So, the question we put to you today is what is the status of CERA?
What was the last word you said? What was the status of what?
CERA, Shreveport Implementation Redevelopment Authority.
I'm not familiar with that status that you said.
We, we can get, find some information on what's the status of CERA, and we can get that information to the council and to you as well.
Okay. We are trying to work and redevelop that particular area. It's a very large area. Four of you represent that particular area. Like I say, we don't have a DDA. We are community associations. I mean, downtown is also an opportunity zone, and things are working for downtown. They're not working for us. Over, over a period of time, sixty-some years ago, this was thought about. The communications that you have with you now, okay, explains that. I would like to see you come out and explain that to those particular community associations.
Mr. Clark, I'll say this, the, the house that I was born on, on Burlingame, about three, four blocks from Woodlawn, is probably, what was once about a dozen houses on that street is now about four that's actually occupied. It's probably four that's demolished. And I go to that neighborhood all the time. I have family members that actually still live either on that block or the next block. So I'm intimately aware of the blight that you're speaking of. As you can see, city government is a, a entity with limited resources. You talked about the success of downtown, but even downtown hadn't taken advantage of the opportunity zones at this point, and we are drawing closer to the deadline. If there's any opportunities, any resources that I can help out my, the neighborhood I was born in, I assure you I will be jumping at that opportunity. In the meantime, I'm working with the resources that we do have, and we are going to be relentlessly pursuing those opportunities. So don't think I'm blind to this or deaf to this. We are looking every way we possibly can to help out every neighborhood in Shreveport.
I just wanted to make sure that there was no other agenda other than trying to redevelop. I mean, we seem to, we seem to do a good job of developing, developing. We have never, never done redevelopment. It's about time we get started.
I agree with you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Kaylee Power. Ms. Kaylee Power. Mr. Murphy, good evening. How are you, sir?
Excuse me?
How are you, sir? Good evening.
Oh, I'm excellent. How are you guys doing?
Well, thank you for being here.
State your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Murphy, and you have three minutes.
Okay, I gotta try to set this up. My name is Cedric Murphy. I am, my address is twenty-seven forty-four Murphy Street, and I am a happy and proud member of the disability community here in Shreveport. So I just wanna share some awareness, and hopefully we can work on trying to get communication started with the disability community.
Cook, I know how to drive, I can get my own some jazz, I can work, I can do anything except for tie the shoe.
This is the gumbo games we have here in Shreveport. This young man went missing January twenty-second, he special needs, and there's still nothing about him. Massachusetts is still electric shocking people with disabilities. The governor just signed a bill in twenty seventeen saying that people with disabilities will not be under the corporal punishment. I have one last slide. This is my concern. If disability is not on the agenda, no arts diversity. We have to include those guys, you know? The best I can do is just come out and share information. I'm in the community, we're doing things that we can, but disability is not on the agenda here in Shreveport. And, um, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I wanted, I just want to say thank you to you because, because of your presentations that, when you come in here, and I think about you specifically sometimes when I'm driving around or walking around in the neighborhoods in my district, and I see our shortcomings as far as how we plan our infrastructure, and I do acknowledge that we have to do better. And as a member of the plan, as the chair of planning, GIS and infrastructure, but also as a member of the master planning committee, I think that when we do start revising our master plans, that's something we should think about, not just in our, like, dry, like our streets and our sidewalks, but also that we don't really have any completely inclusive playgrounds, and that's something else that we need to be thinking about. Um, something I thought about, I saw recently, and I think I saw something similar in there, was, um, Tommy Hilfiger did a line of clothing for children with disabilities, and he's now updated and made it for adults, uh, for, for lots of different types of disabilities, the things that we see as visible, and then the things that aren't always as visible to us. And I think that that's awesome, and I think that seeing more of that in the media helps us to understand how we can do better in our communities. So thank you for that.
And I did acknowledge Mayor Perkins and Councilwoman and Councilman and Councilman Bowman, I'm sorry, but, uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much.
Mr. Murphy, you put me in your presentation, so that was acknowledgement.
I was mad at you at first, sir, but I didn't realize how much you do. And I just want to show you, sir, I appreciate you, and I thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate your presence, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Kraft.
Kevin Kraft, at one fifty-seven Archer Avenue, three forty-seven Orange Avenue. Before we get to infrastructure, I want to remind the council that we're way able to on a city charter review committee, the parish requires its parish charter be reviewed every four years. That's the first thing we should put in our charter, and then many other things, some technical, some major. When it gets to infrastructure, thank you again for the meeting, Chair Fuller last week, the Mardi Gras meeting, and, and the other two who were able to attend, and I'm sorry we missed Mr. Bradford. Kind of linking infrastructure to garbage fees and the penny on the five, but if we got a seven-dollar fee, and I haven't changed my position, three years ago I stood up here and said from six to eight dollars a month, when Mayor Tyler proposed twelve, that was voted down, and, and so we got nothing. I wish we had gotten six dollars then, we would have taken in since then millions, but it didn't happen. Hopefully, we will vote in two weeks. But infrastructure, as it relates to the bond election whenever it comes, and thank you for calling me last Friday afternoon, I was crossing the Red River on I-thirty when the phone rang, so I pulled over. We can do it any way we want. It turns out there was no council resolution, there was no executive order, the mayor just got together with the council, and we had a committee chaired by Liz Wayne, and we moved forward. Now later, yeah, we had to do a resolution to go to the bond commission and have an election on April second of eleven, so y'all can really do that any way you like. And I think if we do a garbage fee of seven, a sales tax is only needed for two years to build a reserve at a penny on a ten-dollar bill, one-tenth of a percent is all you need, a dime on a hundred-dollar bill. It would cost the poor among us, and the poorest of the poor buy their groceries with food stamps, and are no sales taxes on food stamps. The other advantage of a sales tax, according to LSU study in the eighties, so it's thirty years old, uh, thirty-five percent of our sales tax revenue derives from non-Shreveporters. It's the only tax revenue we have where we get more than a third of it, and it's fifty-seven percent of our general fund, and we get a lot of it from people from Marshall and Blanchard and Bossier. Of course, I spend money at the Boardwalk and Bossier, and y'all might too, but think about that. If we get a garbage fee in the seven-dollar range, we only need a penny. If we have no garbage fee, we need two-tenths of a cent, a penny on a five-dollar bill, the Lincoln on a Lincoln, the coin on the five-dollar bill, and then only for two years. Y'all can also, by state law, pass an ordinance, call it for a resolution, that to renew it would require a two-thirds vote of the council, a seventy-five percent. You could even say it would require unanimous vote, I would, but keep, keep in mind the revenue critical, Mr. Nicholson, the mayor, both aware of this, I know who Sharica is, we've got to shore up that reserve, so whatever it takes, don't be afraid to let the people vote on October twelfth on a small sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Mr. Mears.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, apartment M-one-ten, Shreveport, Louisiana seven one one oh one. And I've been waiting to make everybody hungry, and I'll tell you why, especially you, Mayor Perkins. Church of the Holy Cross soup lunches will start Wednesday, which is tomorrow, on March thirteenth, going through April tenth, for five weeks, from eleven AM to one PM for five dollars. And I hope to see that everyone gets to come to this. They have been doing this for many, many years. Soup, dessert, ice water, and coffee, all are very good and very tasty. And I know that I have been there for a long time, and that's why I enjoy going, so I'm reminding everyone, like Arthur Thompson, I know you've been there, I want to remind Tonya, Jaclyn, Karen, I want y'all to come. It's not really much out of your work schedule to come and just have a hot bowl of soup with dessert and ice water. Wouldn't hurt. Mayor Perkins, I want to see you there too, just like I did when you were riding in the float on Highland. And you know, when you were going down there in Herndon, well, I saw you, I was standing right there in front of Noel Methodist Church. And so why I caught this and this because of you. And also, I'd just like to say, all of you really need to come, and for those who have not come, Levette, John, Grayson, and James Green, feel free to come. Of course, he disappeared, but I'm sure that he'll want to come too, I'll contact him. I know that Willie Bradford, James Flirty, and Arthur Thompson have been there before and hope to see you there for five dollars, at eleven AM to one PM over at Church of the Holy Cross. It's on the corner of Cotton Street and Texas Avenue, for those who might not know. And Levette, that's why I had to let you know right away before the meeting started.
That was considerate of you, I appreciate it.
Well, if I little, if I kind of became a kook a little bit earlier, please understand, I didn't want you to let this slip by because I didn't have your number to contact you.
Mr. Sammy Mears, you are consistent, it's all good.
Yeah, probably a kook too, but I still want to let you know.
Sammy, Sammy, be sure Chairman Bowman gets invited, okay? I didn't hear you call his name.
Oh, yes. You come too. I hope you'll be there, Chairman Bowman, you come.
He likes some kind of thing where it's food.
Oh, yes, I'm sure he does. It's like I wouldn't invite two dum-dums like Beavis and Butthead, but you are welcome to come.
I know we, I know it's late in the evening, we get, we ready to go, but I did want to ask, um, I, I, I heard thoroughly, uh, Mr. Clark, and I wanted to just, if I can ask Mr. Settle to come up for two minutes? And he would address, um, well, help me to address that.
Thank you, John Settle, for Tillwood, I know you're all tired. I've been following the redevelopment, uh, effort, and I'll summarize an email that I received from Tom Arsenault, who's head of that, uh, board on March eleventh. First of all, he invited me and Mr. Clark to come to the meeting on March eleventh. Perhaps that'd be the best way for Mr. Clark, would be to go to the monthly meetings. Uh, this group has obtained a lot of information, their real problem is they have no money. They've applied to a grant for the community foundation to, uh, uh, set up a legal infrastructure for making contracts for redevelopment, and they're pursuing on that. They've also had briefings from the Neighborhood Choice thing. The biggest problem with this group is that they're having, challenging, is that the legislation which set this up for Shreveport was basically gutted when it was passed, and it took away a lot of powers that were intended for this group to have to eminent domain or to take legal action. So the real challenge is to have the legislation restored what was initially proposed. I have a red line of what was taken out, I can provide to you, but that's the basic problem, is, is that. It's a legislative problem to restore the powers that they really need to be an effective redevelopment agency. Then there's a funding issue. That's where they are, their meetings are once a month, and I've shared this, Mr. Clark, he can go and sit in on it, but that's the real challenges.
Councilman Butcher?
Mr. Settle?
Yes, sir.
Would, would this, this redevelopment authority, would it, would it help with adjudicated properties?
Yes, it's right now, and one of the things, you know, you have eight thousand properties that Terrence Green is mowing, uh, and about four hundred thousand dollars of your budget goes toward mowing. And that eight thousand I just got from Mr. Green yesterday, and a little over four hundred thousand for mowing, so that is a major challenge, and it needs to be, our legislative delegation needs to help the mayor out and everyone to restore the powers that were originally set forth.
We have got, we, the adjudicated process in the city and the parish is, is awful. I, I've tried to buy things myself, and it's, um.
You got state law.
Not since I've been elected, but in the past, I've tried to buy things myself.
We get a sheet with all the best properties.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You got eight thousand you picked from.
Yeah, exactly, but it, it is, it's very difficult. I, I, I've done some appraisals for some people that have put like apartment complexes in Waterside and over in, you know, off of, uh, off of Madison Park back in there, and it's, it's regenerating tax dollars. Just one gentleman built, you've probably seen him, they're the new little apartments along East Greg, he built like ten apartment duplexes down there. They're all valued, I valued it like ninety thousand dollars apiece, so can you imagine? We turn those adjudicated properties, but he had to jump through so many hoops to get those lots, and, uh, I, I, you know, I'm for anything that's going to make it easier to redevelop any subdivision in, in, in Shreveport, so.
I think it's a matter of the local delegation working together for a change and helping out with that and other needed legislation the city needs. And I can provide the red line if you want it, but that's a quick summary.
You're not giving State Representative Glover credit because he tried to pass that legislation, you all gutted it, and when it got back home, it was watered down.
Correll sponsored the first one.
I never have been a legislator, so I didn't gut anything.
I've talked to two legislators, actually, about this since, well, before I was elected and since I've been elected, to try to help with this adjudicated problem that we've had, because four hundred thousand dollars to cut grass, that's a lot of money.
Pay some sanitation work with races.
Two million? Okay, I thought John said four hundred thousand.
No, no, I have an email from Terrence Green that says it's eight thousand adjudicated abandoned properties, and he's spending a little over four hundred thousand a year cutting the grass. I'll share that with Mr. Clark, and maybe he can start dealing with the city officials to get his information rather than coming here and wasting time. All right, if there's nothing else in this meeting, and.